At this time, I'd like to call the order of the regular city council meeting for May 14th, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, let the roll call show everyone's here this evening. And we'll look to approve the minutes of April 23rd, 2018. Councilmember Parisian, go ahead.
Lisa, I have on page two. If you go all the way down to the last quarter of the page, the motion to approve agenda as amended, it says motion by Kennedy, it should say supported by Parisian. Thank you.
Nothing on that one. Next one.
Did anyone have anything?
I move the minutes as amended.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes? Approval of city bills?
I'll move the bills. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Now on to attorney bills for the city.
Move the bills.
Yep, I know we did already, but thank you, Councilmember Walton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approval of the agenda. I know we need to make some adjustments here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one addition to request. I'd like to add a new business number 15 to consider the monthly rental charges for the city rental property at 464 South Lafayette.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to add item number 16. And this is to discuss counteroffer regarding Mike Bovin.
Is the, is 15 supposed to be a decision maker? Because that'll need a supermajority.
That would be up to council. Perhaps Councilmember Kennedy could offer some guidance. It was an item that he had requested.
On new business item 15, what I was looking for is agreement to direct the interim city manager to investigate what comparable properties would rent for on a monthly basis and make the rental at the city property commensurate with that.
Good.
Councilmember Richards, did you?
Yes.
You asked to have consideration of the cemetery commission on the agenda. Are you prepared to speak on that this evening?
No. Item number three, on old business, we wish to postpone that at this time to a date to be determined in the future when I consult with the city manager.
Does anyone else have anything for the agenda?
I'll move the agenda as amended.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? At this time, we'd welcome public comment. Please be sure to state your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Judy Keeling. I live at 62180 Arlington Circle Colonial Acres. I have it under good authority that our chief of police and interim city council manager is getting the lifetime achievement award by the Chamber of Commerce, and I'd like to congratulate him.
Thank you. Congratulations, Chief. Okay, well, that was short and sweet for public comment tonight. At this point, we are scheduled for a presentation from Warren Kramer and R.W. Baird and Company.
The chief told me I was first on the agenda. I didn't think I'd be quite that fast. I was just trying to review my notes. And first of all, it's nice to be back. It's been quite a while since I've been here, and I'm sure you've had some wonderful reading. I don't know what the chief gave you, but I understand you got a missive that I prepared a few months ago. And I apologize I couldn't get to your last meeting, you know, to review it with you. So I was trying to brush up on all the wonderful things I came up with. And in any event, I don't know if you have had a chance to look at this, but I was tasked to take a look at the city's existing water and sewer rates and the, really, the financial integrity of your water and sewer funds. Right off the bat, I want to tell you, both funds are very, very healthy. We got very important influence from Phyllis Poprovsky and your consulting engineer, Hubble Roth and Clark, and that information was very helpful. We assumed first that all of your capital improvements that have been identified would be paid out of existing rates and charges. I want to let you know that we solicited comments from both Hubble Roth and Clark, the city, and your auditor, Brian Camiller. And the, I believe, the spreadsheet that was handed out to you assumed that the currently identified capital improvement projects were paid with funds on hand. For a system of your size, we'd recommend that available cash equal anywhere between nine to 12 months of operation. You know, you're currently well beyond that. You've established good and prudent reserves policy up to this point. And, you know, at the request of, you know, your auditor, you know, we ran several scenarios, one to show you what the rate impact would be if we, again, funded the pay-as-you-go capital improvements out of current rates and charges and left cash on hand untouched. Given the extent of the cash on hand and the projects identified, we showed you another scenario, what would the rate impact be if you paid for these improvements out of cash on hand? Basically, you guys can go quite some time without having to adjust rates if, in fact, you deem it's prudent to, you know, reduce or draw down on, you know, your current fund balances. Mr. Bovin just pointed out to me that you have some, you know, other water improvements that are coming to the table. I'm not sure if those were built into our original projections. But again, you know, both funds, you know, are in very, very good shape. Again, I don't think you would at all adversely impact the operational integrity of either fund by drawing down to pay for those improvements, you know, at this particular point. I'd like to reserve judgment to have the opportunity to build those back into the model, once we find out, you know, kind of what we're looking at at that point. But when we're asked to look at, you know, water and sewer rates, that the first thing that we tried to do is look at the reasonableness, you know, of, you know, the projections or the basis for your revenue, you know, going forward. And again, the city was extraordinarily helpful in getting me the information. I know that you instituted a new billing program in 2015. So our historical data is somewhat limited, but when you look at all the parts, especially your billable water or treated water and wastewater, it's very, very good. I mean, you have tremendous stability in those components of your revenue structure. The big variables that you have, as you would expect, is your summer water usage, which varies widely from year to year, and your, you know, the sale of untreated water, you know, to MST. When you look at just the billable treated flow, and this would be water excluding the summer usage, and it would be for your sewer, as you know, is based on the average of the preceding three quarters, and you bill on a quarterly system, the standard deviation from the average is very tight. Means that those numbers, you know, provide a very good basis for your revenue projections, you know, going forward. Now, what we tried to do was also measure the variability in MST usage and your seasonal water usage. As you would expect, it's very, very difficult. The standard deviation from the mean for MST is much tighter than your, you know, summer water usage. And that just depends, you know, on weather. But we went through every aspect, you know, of the budget, your line items, all the components of all your revenue. Again, I think you have a very good base with which to go forward. I think we were conservative in the assumptions that, we think the city was actually very conservative in the assumptions that it made for MST. We took, you know, the budgeted number and backed into applied, into an implied consumption, you know, which was almost two standard deviations below the average over the last, you know, five years, which is a huge amount. It's like 20 some odd percent, and you were well under that. So going forward, again, your billable flow assumptions were very, very conservative. For your MST consumption was very conservative. The only thing that is a wild card is your, you know, annual summer water usage, which has a direct impact, you know, on sewer, you know, as well. But sewer by itself, you know, it's very easy, you know, to project that, you know, going forward. It's just really the water component. And when Mr. Bovin said we have some water improvements that are coming down the road, those, of course, are very important. Me and my ears kind of, you know, picked up. But right now, the cash flows that you have in front of you, all of the assumptions are detailed, you know, in the missive that I sent, you know, to the chief. And I don't want to bore you or the rest of you at this, at this point. But, you know, absent, you know, detailed project numbers at this point, you know, we feel going forward and addressing the capital improvements that have been identified thus far, you know, and using funds on hand at this point, you know, the city is in very good shape, and there's no immediate need, you know, to raise rates at this point. However, if you wanted to pay for those capital improvements, assuming that they were going on and on an annual basis in the same amount, you know, rates would have to go up by 6 and 13 percent, and then followed by inflationary increases thereafter. It was 6.92 percent for sewer and roughly 13.18 percent for water. But again, by addressing those capital improvement needs with funds on hand, you probably, all of the things being equal, won't have to raise rates, you know, for, you know, three, well, I think I just misspoke. You won't have to raise rates, there we go, that's why I was confused, on the sewer side, you know, for the next three or four year, or four or five years, all of the things being equal. You know, on, that's the water. And on the sewer side, we're really looking at a very small increase, you know, for fiscal year end 2019. You know, we're not even into that fiscal year yet, and then inflationary increases thereafter. So I try to condense everything very, very much, but if I glossed over something too much, I'm here to answer any questions, you know, that you might have, or any of the assumptions or analysis that we prepared in the letter to the chief. Yes, sir?
This is driven primarily just for operation, correct? Not, no capital improvement for, we've got an awful lot of-
You have, that's correct.
Yeah.
Is primarily just operations going forward. I want to let you know we were conservative in that. We assumed revenues stayed flat, and then we assumed that annual operating expenditures increased 3 percent a year. So even that scenario, absent the capital improvements, you know, has, you know, some conservative assumptions in there. So hopefully nothing's going to kind of sneak up behind you and surprise you.
Well, it is the capital improvements that actually caused me some concern, simply because we've had some failings with some sewer lines and that, that we're going to end up having some pretty big bills coming up if this continues to, I mean, there's an area that seems more vulnerable than the entire city. But if that ends up turning into a replacement situation like we've had to just do on an emergency basis, then, you know, I mean, that's an awful lot more funds than, than operational funds.
Oh, no, and that I understand. And that's why, you know, I apologize if I wasn't clear when I provided the chief with, you know, the updated cash flows, just showing as an alternative what would, you know, the rate impact look based on our assumptions, you know, if you paid for those capital improvements, you know, with funds on hand. And, but, you know, if you wanted to pay for them out of rates and charges, you know, you'd see about, you know, as I said, 6.92 percent for, was it water, and then?
13.
That was sewer, sorry.
That was sewer, right.
Dyslexic. And then-
13 1.
13, yeah, for water.
Right.
And, and those identified capital improvements were provided by your consulting engineer. And again, they were just identified, you know, capital improvements. But for the most part, you know, the funds are in, you know, very good shape. They just need to be adjusted to address, you know, capital needs. One of the things that we can also build in here is if you wanted to put aside certain amount of dollars in a repair and replacement fund, you know, to address that, so you can build up money. I mean, frankly, I want, just to make one thing clear. I've worked with the city a long, long, long time, and I get, you know, I make my money helping municipalities finance large infrastructure improvements with the issuance of bonds. If you can do that without me, you're better off. I mean, you're just simply, you know, better off. I'm a big believer in it's pay me now or pay me later. It always costs more later. So, you know, I think it would be very prudent if you wanted me to build in, you know, I think I predicated the whole thing to the chief by saying, you know, we have the basis for a good conversation going forward, but we really need some direction, you know, from the council, you know, as to what provisions would you like us to make? Would you like to see annual set-asides for repair and replacement? You know, that can be used for capital. I mean, there's a lot of things we can do by building that in just within, you know, the inflationary increases, you know, for the system. And there's ways to spread it out and layer it in. Nothing's free, but you can always, you know, build that in. And the more cash that you have, the less need that you'll have to borrow in the future. Again, all other things being equal. So cash is king. Cash is very important. Again, you have a very, very strong cash balances in both funds. I think some of it can be used. I was pleased to hear that you had that much. I tend to be looking at just the revenue and expense statement as opposed to the balance sheet. But again, that, the balance sheet, you know, indicated that there have been prudent set-asides over the years. That's to be commended, and, you know, would recommend that continue to be done going forward, you know, even if it's just a simple line item for repair and replacement. But we tried to identify, again, all the capital improvements that were identified by Hubble Roth and Clark. Again, the impact was not huge by any stretch of the imagination. It's nice to see a system that's really as competitive as yours are, as yours are, both of them, and, you know, how well-funded or protected you are in the event of any unforeseen budgetary imbalance. But I think, you know, the, the analysis that you've had done in identifying, you know, the, the needs of the system, again, is very, very prudent. And you have a lot of flexibility as to how you want to allocate these charges, whether, now, we've assumed that they go to your ready-to-serve charge and to your commodity charges. Now, you have to remember, your ready-to-serve component is really very, very small. Your commodity charges is where, you know, most of your revenues come from. And those commodity charges, you know, are subject to a lot more variability, you know, than the, than the ready-to-serve. From a pure credit standpoint, people love it when you can kind of mitigate the consumption variable and match your ready-to-serve charges with your fixed charges and your commodity charges with your variable charges. There's lots of different ways that we can go, but it's just very important for us, you know, to get a good idea, you know, of what you hope to accomplish and what your future, you know, capital needs, you know, are going to be. Hubble Roth and Clark was very complimentary of the system, and, you know, I asked them about an ongoing repair and replacement. You know, you've rebuilt a lot of your system already. You've been very, very proactive there. And, you know, they didn't feel that it was really necessary at this time, but, you know, I'm going to defer to your new director and, you know, you know, at this point, you know, with your, with your guidance. But we hope that this was helpful, and if you have any more questions, please.
Councilmember Richards?
Yes, sir.
How do you do, sir? I got two questions.
Yes, sir.
Our fund balance, okay, that we have for our sewer and water, the processed water, drinking water?
Yes.
Okay. That's strictly to be used in those repairs, as opposed to when we have a storm sewer repair for flooding things. We have flooding once in a while in places. You, your firm would recommend we go with a bond issue as such, rather than touch these funds for that type of repairs. Am I reading that correctly?
It really all depends on the outstanding ordinance. You do have, you know, some bonds outstanding. And it depends whether or not it was a closed-loop system, which means that all water revenues and net revenues stay in the water fund, and all, you know, sewer revenues, you know, stay in, you know, the sewer fund. But, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I do know that stormwater has a huge impact on treated wastewater, I and I. And addressing, you know, those costs with sewer monies, and I know it's done quite a bit, you know, can be very helpful in lowering overall costs, you know, to the sewer fund by eliminating that infiltration and inflow.
Okay, but that's what your corporation, your consulting firm recommends that.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not recommending anything with respect to, you know, stormwater. That really is, that really is an engineering issue, and it's also a legal issue with respect to the outstanding bonds, water and sewer bonds of the city. And actually, on the water side, I think you have you have the 2,000 water bonds, they were actually voted. They have since been paid off. You have your 2012 water system bonds that were sold through the Michigan Municipal Bond Authority or the state's revolving loan fund at a subsidy, low-interest subsidized rate. We came up with the concept of junior lien revenue bonds. I'm a big believer in only giving as much credit as is necessary to comply with the requirements of the program. And I don't want to bore you with too many details, but we were actually able to save the city from having to, you know, basically, you know, provide open-market requirements such as the rate covenant or additional bonds test or funded debt service reserve. We were able to meet the requirements of the state revolving loan fund just with a junior lien revenue bond, which was some sufficient on rates, some sufficient on additional bonds, and no debt service reserve. So it was the most efficient way to participate in that program, which is with the bulk of your, bulk of your debt.
Well, that would, that would save us over a million dollars.
I'm sorry, sir?
Would save us over a million dollars in some situations when we have to, we have a storm sewer emergency.
I haven't done that math, sir, and I, it may very well.
Okay. Second question.
Yes, sir.
We, we are in the fourth quarter right now, fiscally, okay? Does your firm recommend to not only this city, but other cities you deal with, that you measure your water flow on the first, one, two, and three quarters, starting in July, to make your analysis and, you know, projections, okay?
Well, on the sewer side, you take out, because, you know, a lot of people are using water to wash their cars, fill up the pools, mow the lawn, and your sewer charges are based on billable water flow. And, you know, there's the belief, and the city has embraced this, that your billable sewer flow should be based on the average of the preceding three months, which, which are very stable, predictable consumption, and take out the summer variable, which, again, most of the water that you use in the summer, a good portion of it does not go back into the sewer system. You know, it just goes down into the storm drain, your lawn, your pool, you know.
Gardens.
Yeah. Yes, sir. So, I mean, I, I think from a sewer standpoint, I, I think that's eminently fair, you know, to do it that way, so you're not charging people for sewage treatment that they really aren't utilizing.
You do it that way with other communities?
A lot of other communities do that.
Okay.
Some don't.
In this community, a third of our volume per year goes to tube mill, but in untreated water.
I'm sorry, sir, it goes to?
The tube, the MST, okay?
And-
Approximately a third of all water, that part's untreated, okay?
That's correct.
Exactly, the tube mill, at a different rate, okay? Substantially less.
Oh, absolutely, because there's no treatment costs associated with it. You're just simply pumping it for cooling purposes.
Okay, just wanted to make that point. That's all I have.
And we've, we've addressed that. We, we've, you know, segregated each component of your revenue stream, looked at the reasonableness of each component, and then, you know, we exercise, you know, a little restraint and approach the variable components, which is MST and your summer water usage, very conservatively. And, you know, I, I think you have a very good basis to, you know, project revenues, you know, going forward. Again, you know, we've taken into consideration expenditures to date, you know, we've tried to anticipate inflationary increases, you know, on the operation side. And I think the only thing that we really have to do is just simply adjust revenues for new identified, you know, capital improvements.
Councilmember Kittle?
The idea of the, the summer rate has come up a-
The, the idea of the, the summer rate has come up a number of times, and we're really not exposed to anything. If it's a wet summer, we don't pay anymore. If it's a dry summer, they don't pay anymore except in water usage. But our, we're not vulnerable on the sewer side. That's pretty much a consistent, it's an ordinary practice kind of view, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, I mean, if, if people want to wash their car more often, they end up taking the hit for the water. It's really not a vulnerability to us at all.
I agree. The only vulnerability is on the water side.
And what's the vulnerability? If we're, if our unit pricing is appropriate, then we're not vulnerable to anything anyway.
Right. And you guys have the minimum billing component, which helps mitigate that variability. You know, I, that's really very good. And I was just suggesting, you know, that if you wanted to kind of fix your revenues a little bit more, you know, you could, you know, increase ready-to-serv charges and not increase, you know, commodity charges as fast going forward as may be needed.
Counselmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I don't know if you know this or not, but presently, what is funding our repair and replacement fund now?
That was not broken out in the budget. They have capital outlay that was identified.
Yeah.
And, again, you've been setting aside, you know, revenue, I mean, net revenues over the last several years after the payment of debt service, hence your rather, you know, you know, healthy, you know, fund balances in the water and sewer fund. I don't really remember which at this point was, was stronger. But I know that, you know, you've got four million plus between the two. Your operating expenditures between the two are like two million one, two million two. So you're almost two times expenditures. Again, just from a credit standpoint, given, you know, systems of your size, you'd like to see at least nine to 12 months, at least nine months, you know, of, of reserves. So basically, you could operate for nine months without collecting revenues. But again, you have a very capital-intensive, you know, systems, and it's only prudent to have those dollars set aside.
Well, if you increased the water rate or the sewer rate, those increases could go into this repair and replacement fund.
Absolutely.
Because my personal opinion is, is that it's better to squirrel away a little bit of money each year than it is to sit there in year five and tap in a large amount of money out of your reserves. I, I think it's just a.
See, if everybody that I worked for thought like you did, I'd be out of business. So, so I tend, as I prefaced it, you know, you guys are better off if you don't need me. You're much better off if you don't need me. And you have dollars that you can pay for those necessary capital improvements with, and you don't have to borrow and add an interest component, you know, to your expense structure.
Well, the, the problem is when we come to you is, and you're, I've spoken to you before, and you've been absolutely wonderful, extremely, very, very articulate, very good, you know, in terms of your information. But from a budgeting standpoint, when we come to you and get a bond, we're, we're feeling that pinch right now because we are tied up for another 10 years in which we have limited opportunities to use revenue from the city because that revenue, you know, based on the mill, is being used to service the debt on the bond. We have, I think, about nine, 10 years.
Less debt, the more, all other things being equal, the more money you have for other purposes. You're correct.
That's exactly right. So what's happening is that the city is just so squeezed right now, you know, with this, this bond payment is, is about a million dollars a year.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a million dollars a year that the city can't use for development of a park or, or to do this or do that. So to avoid going to the bond market.
Well, it's really only affecting the water and sewer funds, not the general fund.
But, but it's the mill because we're charging.
I understand. My apologies. That's right, you're.
Yeah, we're charging, you know, 3.33, I think, or 3.30 on the mill for that. Well, that mill could be, those three mills could be shifted to the operating side of the budget at some point to be used for something else.
Yeah, I, that's a, a legal question because I thought it was voted for system improvements, if I recall.
No, but when, but when the bond is paid off, that millage is now available to be used. The city can raise a mill someplace else rather than being tapped out because that's what we have right now.
Well, the 2,000 water bonds, they, you paid those off in 2016.
No, we, we have about nine more years on that.
That's on the 2012 bonds, that's correct.
Yeah.
About eight, nine years on that.
Yeah.
And that was strictly paid just out of the revenues of the system. There is, and if there's a millage to pay that?
Yeah, there's the mill.
Okay.
It was a bond, it was an unlimited tax bond.
Okay. We're still providing for the payment of the 2012 bonds in the water system cash flow.
Yeah. Now, do you by any chance advise paying off a bond early to, to get rid of the, the bond payments if you can? I mean, I know, I understand you have to look at the contractual language of the bond because the bond may provide it an early payoff, but.
The bonds that you sold through the revolving funds don't have really a prepayment ability. And at this point, you really wouldn't want to pay, prepay them because the rate on those bonds are so low.
They're so low.
Right. And your cost to finance new improvements would be more expensive than the bonds that you're paying interest on right now. You know, so you'd leave those outstanding and use whatever excess cash you might have at that point then to pay for other capital improvements in lieu of financing them. And you're, you know, again, if you finance them, let's say you sold, now, there was a period of time when the state revolving loan funds were down to 1.625%. I think right now they're about 2.5%. But if you were going to finance a long-term, you know, improvements to either the water or sewer system in the open market, you're going to be paying about 4.25% versus 2.5%. So you'd rather not pay off the 2.5% and use those excess cash to pay for the improvements rather than finance those improvements.
Mr. Mayor.
I hope that helped. Did that answer your question?
Oh, yeah, I got it.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
Dan, I'd just like to make one comment on that. That DWRF also had a 50% forgiveness, so that was a particularly advantageous position for us to capitalize on.
Yeah.
Does anyone have anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're going to survive.
Thank you. I think you are. Thank you.
Tim, are we going to be looking to go into closed session now or moving to the?
That's, that's really up to council. So council's been provided with a May 11, 2018 letter regarding the liquor license ordinance and legal issues remaining to the, the city's sole remaining Class C on-premises license. If council would like to go into closed session to discuss the legal issues in that letter, that would require a two-thirds vote. If there is no real need or desire to do that, no action needs to be taken on that matter.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Comment.
Oh, comment, all right. Counselmember Presian?
Um, would you recommend that we go into closed session? And if so, would you recommend that we do it now or at the end of the meeting?
Well, the intent here was to, there's a couple of legal issues relating to the liquor license ordinances that are on the agenda later in the meeting. So this would be an opportunity to go through and address the legal issues that are identified in my privileged communication before you move through the rest of your agenda and address those items.
So my concern would be if we go into closed session right now, everybody in this room would have to clear out.
Well, my recommendation would be go down to the conference room in the room, in the other part of City Hall.
For the convenience of the folks that are here tonight, is it possible to scoot this to the end of the meeting?
It would make sense for us to tweak the agenda so that we can accommodate everybody that's here and deal with those liquor license impact of circumstances in the, the agenda just following the closed session.
I'm in favor of that.
Does anybody have any heartburn about that?
No. Anyone?
No. Mr. Mayor, when did we receive this communication?
Couple days ago.
I believe that was emailed, uh, Tim?
Friday evening. Delivered to me.
Okay, I must have missed it when I checked my emails today because I didn't.
Okay, he brought it right to my door.
Then that even makes more sense to maybe move it down so Ms. Walton can take a look at that.
I will.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you need a copy?
If I could get a copy, that'd be great. I'm just going to borrow Counselmember Richards' her.
Yeah, I've got my copy here.
Okay.
So do we just need a simple motion to move this?
Yeah, I mean, I'll make the motion that we move the closed session to the end of the meeting after council comments before adjournment.
No, the closed session has to be.
We need it before number 12.
Old Business Number One is, is one of the aspects of the discussion about the liquor license, and then it's followed up on.
13 or 12?
12.
12.
I believe it's number 12.
Yeah, number 12, so.
So could.
So, I don't know how you bump the old, the old business and the new business business.
Go ahead.
May just want to take a vote and see if you even have the votes to go into a closed session. If you don't, then you can just go out with the discussion and move on to Old Business Number One.
Well, this is kind of moot in the event that we do reconsider a 121, or 122 anyway.
Renewal.
Yeah.
This is a council issue. I, I don't, I don't see a burning need to go into closed session, but I wanted you to have the opportunity to see what I see as the legal issues, and if you want to discuss those, that's the purpose for going into closed session.
I'll make a motion.
What's the motion you want to make?
Omit the closed session.
Can we move it?
Just remove it from the agenda or put it in later, later on if you want to. Can't do it that way.
So, go ahead. The problem is, we need this microphone a little bit closer, buddy, okay? All right, now go ahead with your motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we pull council, see if we want to have this closed session at all, and if we do want to have it, have it at the end of the meeting, not now. Second?
Well, I've got a question. First off, if we, if we do the reconsider or the renew, consider the renewal and that is approved, then that's all moot anyway, correct?
What's moot?
The, the, the need for a closed session. I mean, if we're going to actually approve the language of the 122, then this all goes away.
Potentially, yes. Some, some of the issues are addressed through that, yes.
Okay.
Personally, I would, I'd rather us just power through and do the reconsideration of.
I made the motion.
The 122. Well, I know, but it hasn't been seconded.
No, right. So we haven't had a second. Do we have a second? Okay, great.
Motion dies.
Yep. So, we will just power through. Okay. Mr. Donahue, do you have anything on the downtown?
They've got a long agenda, so I'll make it brief.
Thank you.
Unless you have any questions. Two items I would like to note, superb fabricating regarding their IFT request. Our interim city manager, police chief Collins, received a letter that they would like to rescind their request for the industrial facilities tax district, and they're going to put their project on hold. Also, the only other thing is that we're moving forward to get an overall events calendar for the city and the downtown and complete that and get it on the website in two weeks.
Is that going to accommodate things going on in the park as well?
Yes, anything that we're aware of, yes.
Okay.
That's great.
It'll be kind of a good planning tool for this year.
Historical was concerned about things not being picked up on their, you know, their scheduling.
I'm going to go meet with them on Thursday.
Terrific, thank you.
Question. Counselmember Richards?
Bob, is there going to be some publication for the public, okay, on our over-the-road and light-pull banners that they have to pay for? The city's not paying for those.
No.
They got to donate the money to pay for those. And if the public doesn't know that, as far as I know, are you going to post it somewhere or let them know?
Number one, the DDA is going to review that and recommend it to city council in June.
Okay.
Yes, and there will be guidelines and an application, no cost to the city.
Great, thank you for that update.
Thank you, Bob.
Does anyone have anything else for Mr. Donahue?
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Moving on to Old Business Number One, consider renewal of motion to approve the second reading of the January 22, 2018 version of the proposed liquor license ordinance. Counselmember Kennedy?
Just a bit of discussion surrounding this, and I'd like to, to start by, by using an effective metaphor. I believe that we have kicked the can down the road far too long regarding this particular subject. I believe approval of the second reading of the liquor control ordinance dated January 22, 2018 provides the city with the best process for managing its remaining liquor license. I believe it is reasonable and prudent that an applicant provides an application and overall business plan that details, among other things, the hours of operation, the prospective menu, the proposed seating capacity, background of the applicant in operating similar establishments, et cetera. This isn't a situation of government meddling and private enterprise or being unfriendly to business. It's a situation where the city's representatives should be willing to demonstrate their commitment to and stewardship of the city's assets. This is far too valuable an asset to the city to be used for just any site and provided to the first applicant to come forward and request it. It is our last Class C liquor license for the next few years and should be used as a draw for a large establishment that will be of significant benefit to the city and its residents. Having reviewed the application requirements from the MLCC, there is little, if any, concern for our community in those requirements. Basically, it's the responsibility of the city to look out for itself. We, as representatives of the residents of South Lyon, have an obligation to diligently protect the city's assets and ensure they are used to provide the greatest benefit to its residents. We need this ordinance in place to guide those practices. As it stands right now, the proposed ordinance does not impact any of the city's existing business establishments. If going forward, we find that something isn't working the way we thought it would, with this ordinance, we can easily modify it at that point and address the situation. I feel this would be a far more, more prudent approach than going back after the fact and trying to incorporate the safeguards that should have been there at the outset. I'd encourage the council members to approve the liquor licensing ordinance dated January 22, 2018 and help better manage this asset for the city.
Counselmember Kittle?
I'm in agreement with that in the event that someone identifies something that doesn't seem to be appropriate to, to the, the character of the city, or they think that something is a little bit more, more severe than what we want, might want, we can always make an amendment down the road. So I think that this, this puts us in the best position to be able to protect the asset of the city's liquor license without damaging the relationship with anybody that might wanting to be setting up shop here, so.
Counselmember Presian?
Um, I did some extensive research. I've been doing extensive research, and I dove a little deeper, and I decided to look at communities that have similar populations to the city of South Lyon, and I found that Milford, for instance, has a 350-plus liquor license renewal system, application system. Their ordinance is encompassed with 350 pages of just data, and that alone is stringent. So I looked at Howell. Howell also has very stringent guidelines as well, and their population is less than ours. So we have a population of roughly 12,000, they're looking at 9,000. I looked at Lyon Township as well, and Lyon Township has equally stringent guidelines as that, as to what we are asking. So all the comparables that I've looked at seem to be either more strict, more restrictive than what we are asking for, and based on that, I'm going to be voting in favor of this.
Counselmember? Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you. Um, I also have done extensive research on this and looked at communities that are considered underdeveloped as South Lyon is, and found that the liquor license ordinance that is being proposed dated January twenty-second, eighteen, appeared to be far too restrictive for the city of South Lyon, given that it's in its early stages of development. The other cities that do have, um, a lot of text to their ordinances are cities that are quite developed, like Milford and Howell, where their downtowns are far more developed than where we're at, at our stage in terms of developing. So, we do have another liquor license that is on for consideration, that the date on that is dated May, I believe the May tenth version, that particular liquor license ordinance, I felt was more friendly to the business environment, far more adaptable to the, the development that I think we want to attract to the city in our early years. We can always become stricter with the liquor license as time goes on, but to start out being strict, I think, is, is not what I would do, I think it, it tends to sort of snuff out those entrepreneurs that may want to come into the city as, looking at the ordinance, that may just have too many costs associated with it. So I am in favor of a liquor license to give the city some control, but I'm in favor of the one that is less lenient, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say something.
Councilmember Richards?
Uh, I'm in favor of making something easier for a client to, to obtain a liquor license, as long as they follow certain guidelines, okay? And we have certain controls. In my opinion, there's certain things in this ordinance that have not been addressed fully or even remotely, okay? One being, I would point out, transfer of licenses. The transfer of ownership of an existing license, of interest in an existing license, or transfer of location of an existing license, does not require approval of the local unit of government. I'm totally opposed to that, but basically, I'm still in favor of, you know, less restrictions overall, but that, we gotta have control, in my opinion, on that particular part, or we can get in big trouble. And there's some other smaller items that we've never hammered out, I wish they'd all been presented to us in a checks and balances way where we could answer the questions from the city attorney, how do we each, how do each of us feel, because we approved this, okay, and we're stuck with it, okay, in my opinion, it's not gonna be easy to change it, okay? Anyway, that's all I have to say.
I make a motion that we approve the second reading for the one twenty-two, eighteen version of the liquor license ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Did you vote?
New business number two, consider leaf disposal.
We've heard one around the block on this one.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to start us off tonight.
Um, I can just go with, um, the first part was dumping on the land, I think, is gonna be too costly, number one, we've already allowed the farmer to continue his farming, and then looking at the state regulations and everything, I think, some turmoil possibly with, with residents in the area, so I thi, I think it'd be an uphill battle. So I put together what some of our existing costs were, and also what it would be like if GFL took over some of those responsibilities. They have a clause, if they go into December, there's a, there's a, there's an extra, extra cost.
Right.
Of twenty-eight dollars and forty-four cents per customer.
Wow.
Um, there's also twenty-seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine, uh, single-family customers, those are the only ones that they currently pick up, they don't do, um, multiple or businesses and stuff, so that, that's where I came up with the seventy-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-twelve, that would just be just for December to add them to it. However, um, talking to a few people, one's our, our attorney over there who lives in Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor just went through the same thing, and they actually cut off their leaf pickup at the end of November, and that's it, they don't have any other leaf pickup, so if we did that, we could go with the existing contract, which chief says, and I've read it, it says they will cover all yard pickup waste as part of that, however, they did argue with me a little bit that they would have to charge extra because they were under the assumption that they, that, that we were picking up leaves too, so, again, but in the contract, it says that they will pick up yard waste, and it says, um, what was the term they used, chief, that I pointed out, unlimited, unlimited leaves, so anyways, if we went that route, we'll let GFL do it during that timeframe, now again, that might lock them in for this contract, next contract, it might change a little bit, but anyways, that would be probably the best way to go as far as cost-wise, but if we continued our existing thing, the cheapest route to go is gonna be to take it to Tuthill. Mr. Kennedy, I looked at taking it up to the Wicksum area, number one, it's gonna add almost an hour to our travel time, and we have to add in those costs, which means less time here picking the leaves up, and they also said they will be, they would charge us, so.
Is that the Spurt facility?
It's right next to the Wicksum plant there, so yeah.
That was Spurt, that was who had been looking at our volunteer part.
Yep, yep, so, and anyways, uh, so what you see here is basically what we found out, what we put together, um, there's some things that we're gonna have to worry about going forward as far as the residents having to bag all their own leaves, now again, talking to some people in Ann Arbor, like Tim, they, uh, you know, if you talk to people today versus when they went through this, none of them can hardly remember going through that, and they all bagged their leaves now, so, um, it's just something, a decision you have to make going forward, whether you want to go that route, save some money, and/or continue the leaf pickup with the maintenance and the replacement stuff as, as it is now, and man-hours. Also, talking to Ron Brock, it would tremendously free up the guy's time to do a lot of the other detailed stuff around town during that time, so, uh, that's another issue to think about, is that added time to spend getting other parts of the city taken care of, because during leaf pickup, that's all they're doing usually.
Dan?
Councilmember Kibble?
The, the only problem I've got with this is that at the same cost, essentially, the, the only difference is that we're asking for residents and their sweat equity, they're the ones that, that are pretty much paying on both ends.
Unless we go to the, the November shut-off, if we go to the November shut-off, as the existing contract reads, there's no additional cost to the city.
There, no, there are additional costs, they're all going to be hidden costs, there're gonna be, uh, leaves that are choking off storm drains, uh, the in, the unexpected consequences, those are going to end up being the costs that will incur, so, unless everybody wants to try to brainstorm and foresee everything that's likely to end up going south.
Exactly.
Uh, I think we need to end up doing it with open eyes, so.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Mike, I appreciate you looking into this, you know, it's, it's always good to be, be looking for ways to, to save money, but, uh, going through the analysis, this isn't an area to do it, and as Councilmember Kibble pointed out, yeah, those leaves would be choking the, the, the storm sewers, they would be killing the lawns because they wouldn't be picked up at the, the end of the year, the people would be back out there doing it, and it's a service that I'd love to provide to the, the residents and continue providing, so I appreciate you looking into it, the, the economy isn't there for it, and, uh, my position, I would recommend just continuing, uh, leaf pickup using the DPW resources as we have been.
I got a question.
Councilmember Richards?
Uh, thank you for your efforts on this, Mike, I, I've gotta agree with you, but I want to ask a question.
Sure.
Is there one part of the city that is more expensive for the DPW to clean up than another part of the city, okay?
It's just all based on where the trees are, I mean, it's, no, not really.
That's right.
Oh, not really.
Parking lots don't generate a lot.
Well, okay, this, uh, if, in the future, we wanted to amend something, amend this a little bit, we gotta have it, okay, no question about it, and this is probably as cheap as you're gonna get it, but could we shave some money and save money if we could find?
The only way is if there's a compost area, like right in town here, which that just eliminates our time of travel, that's the only way to, to really do it, and/or find somebody that wants it cheaper.
If we found a place outside the city limits, on private land, okay, that was accessible, and they, and they would grant us a lease on the property to dump, okay, and it was, it eliminated ten-thousand dollars' worth of expenses of trucking.
Well, and trucking possibly, but then you have to get into the state regulations of setting the property up for it, and I don't know what those costs are, I have no idea, so there's that, and then they have to get special regulations to, to put these places in, like the compost areas and stuff, so that's why we're bringing it to them, is because they're, they're state-licensed to do that.
Well, I'm just thinking in terms of the north end of town, okay, and, you know, could we just shuffle them over to Livingston County across the line?
Get a huge fan.
You, if you vote that in, I'll do it.
Okay, that's enough.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Richards. Did anyone have anything else on this?
Nope.
Thank you for.
No, great work, though, thank you.
Doing, digging those details up. Oh, do it, what, what's on, is consider leaf disposal?
Are we gonna vote on it?
I'd like to make the motion that we direct the Department of Public Works to continue current curbside leaf pickup throughout the city, as they have in the past.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. On to new business number one, consider approval of downtown road closures for Pumpkinfest. The recommendation on this agenda item is rather long, so I'll give you the, consider approval of the requested closures contingent upon submission of required insurance documents at least thirty days prior to the event. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Kathy Swan, forty-four Woodland Place, president of Pumpkinfest. Any questions?
I don't have anything.
So what is this Pumpkinfest?
I don't know, it's just some festival that comes to town once a year, closes down the city.
We're happy to have it, thanks for all that you guys do.
Yes, certainly, I know it's a year-round thing, so.
Yes, it is. Offered by many, many people.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Kathy, the best thing that I heard was, hi, my name is Kathy Swan, president of Pumpkinfest, because you do such an absolutely incredible job, and, and the amount of hours that you put into this is unbelievable, just unbelievable, so.
My question is, what's that?
I know, I know you have great volunteers, great individuals that help, but, you know, thank you so much for what you do. I'd like to make a motion, um, and it's to support the road closures as stated in the agenda note to new business item number one with respect to Pumpkinfest, and the closure is, um, for the downtown event from September twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, until September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, and the related road closures Lafayette Street between Liberty Street and Whipple Street, Lake Street between Wells Street and Washington Street from two PM on Saturday, uh, September twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, until eight o'clock PM on September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, and that the city of South Lyon will faithfully fulfill all permit requirements, and Pumpkinfest shall save, harmless, indemnify, and defend and represent the board against any and all claims for bodily injury, or property damage, or any other claim arising out of, or related to operations authorized with permits to be issued. Additionally, Wells Street between Detroit Street and Eastlake Street shall be closed on Friday, September twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, from seven AM to twelve o'clock PM.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Thanks.
New business number two, consider approval of road closures for Pumpkinfest Parade.
Mr. Mayor? I make a motion that the, uh, that the city council approve the road closure request for Pumpkinfest that's necessary to conduct the parade on September twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, ten AM, and the related street closure, and that's from Pontiac Trail from Nine Mile to Liberty Street, and additionally, that Pumpkinfest will faithfully fulfill all permit requirements, and shall save, harmless, indemnify, defend, and represent the board against any and all claims for bodily injury, or property damage, or any other claim arising out of, or related to operations authorized by such permits as issued, and that West Liberty Street from Lafayette Street to Warren Street, Warren Street from West Liberty Street to Bartlett Elementary School shall be closed on Saturday, September twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, from ten AM till noon. Yes.
I just wanted to make a point, so it's on record too, we have changed the route of the parade, normally it started, um, south of McDonald's, we are starting from Centennial Middle School, um, going east on Nine Mile, and then going out onto Pontiac Trail, we're doing that solely for the community, for the South Lyon School District residents, and to make it more compatible for people to walk in the parade, um, we're shortening the route and making it better access for everybody.
Very good.
Victory.
And I, it's in your package, too, the new map.
Okay, thank you. I second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you very much, guys.
You're welcome, thank you.
I think some of those dance troops will enjoy that shorter route.
Well, especially after the, from last year.
Uh-huh.
Moving on to new business number, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. And we may have a problem. Um, I guess going back to, um, the road closures for the Pumpkinfest, for the festival itself, it's supposed to be twelve o'clock on Friday, not two o'clock.
I believe two o'clock's what it was in the request, and I think that's what we did in prior years, but, but I can live with twelve o'clock.
Okay, yeah, twelve o'clock, do we have to do that again?
What, what, what do you change?
Just amend that.
Yes, we do.
Two o'clock to twelve, for a one Friday.
Yeah, looking at the application, block off time two PM, nine twenty-eight.
No, that's four, it got dropped. Yeah, it's supposed to be twelve.
I'm, I'm all for giving them whatever they were requesting, the request was two, if they would like twelve, I'd recommend twelve.
Is it noon, is that what it is?
On Friday, yes.
I move that the Pumpkinfest committee.
Yes.
Uh, that their block party application be approved with the block off time, uh, starting at noon?
Yes, starting at noon.
Starting at noon on September twenty-eighth of two thousand and eighteen.
Yep, with everything else the same. Okay. Now, second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Haven't you guys been where we, you guys were working in the parking lot at twelve, and?
Yes.
So we didn't do it at that time?
No, we were in the parking lot at eight, but the streets were closed at noon.
Oh, yes.
So we did it at nine, was just to, so we changed it back.
Yeah, okay.
Because there's all these vehicles that are sitting in them.
Yeah, that's, I'm obsessed with her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good catch, though.
New business number three, consider approval of road closures for the Memorial Day Parade, the recommendation is to approve the requested road closures.
Okay, that's.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
I move to approve the closure of Warren Street from Second Street to Lake Street, from, Lake Street from Warren Street to Reynolds Sweet Parkway, Reynolds Sweet Parkway from Lake Street to Stryker Street, Stryker Street from Reynolds Sweet Parkway to the South Lyon Cemetery between nine AM and eleven o'clock AM on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, and to approve the resolution, authorize the city clerk to make application to the road commission for Oakland County on behalf of the city of South Lyon for the necessary permits related to the closure of Lake Street between Warren Street and Reynolds Sweet Parkway on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, at nine o'clock AM for the purpose of the city's annual Memorial Day Parade.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passed.
I'd like to ask that, is then, is there a reach out to CSX as well for the crossing? Don't you typically do that?
Not for Memorial Day.
For the parade, no, okay.
They, they don't stop trains.
New business number four, acceptance of resignations from the Housing Commission. New business number four. Acceptance of resignations from the Housing Commission. Randy Clark and Robert Martin are resigning from the Housing Commission. The recommendation on this is to accept their resignations. I'd like to at least thank them both for their time and commitment to the community. If anyone else has.
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead, Councilmember Richards.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the resignation of Randy Clark and Robert Martin, both of whom have made a tremendous impact on this community, okay, over their years of service, okay. Sorry to lose them, okay, but everybody has to move on, and the beat goes on. So that's my motion, okay?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? New business number five. Consider appointment to Board of Ethics of Suzanne Muscat.
Is she here? Is Miss Muscat here today?
Don't know. Oh, okay.
Hello.
If you'd like to come up to the microphone, you can. I didn't know if anyone had any questions for Miss Muscat.
I enjoyed your, your application. That was interesting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you get to read the second page?
Yes.
Okay.
I had.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't online.
Yeah, but it was comprehensive and kind of spotted that you're a detailed person, so that's good.
It's a sickness.
Councilmember Presian?
I also like what you had to say. I think you would be an asset to the board, and I would be all in favor, so.
Thank you very much.
Very cool. Thank you. Thanks for being willing to volunteer, especially because we have so many boards and committees that we need to fill vacancies. So it's a tremendous effort to try to get people to volunteer, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to make the motion to appoint Suzanne Muscat to the Board of Ethics.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Welcome to the team.
Now, I do want to ask one question. There was language in there that suggested that the Ethics Board doesn't have to comply to the rules of the Ethics Board.
I understand that.
And I'm not tracking, I'd like to have an explanation from our learned attorney.
That's what it says. As you'll recall, this was not drafted by my office. This was drafted by Mr. Muscovitz.
Uh-huh.
But I, I think it is, let me get back to you. I, I.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor.
This is kind of, kind of on par with Congress getting their own health care while everyone else has Obamacare, so.
Councilmember Presian, go ahead.
Not that it would be a conflict, but is there any relation to the law professor, Pat Muscat?
Not that I know of.
Okay, just checking.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
New business number six. Consider appointment to Board of Ethics of Don Beagle. Councilmember Kennedy, please, go ahead.
Okay, before we consider this, I'd like to, to make it known that there may be a potential conflict of interest with this particular appointment, in that my brother and Don Beagle's brother both serve as councilmembers at the, on the city of Wickham City Council. Their relationship has been challenging over the years. However, I just want to make that known. I don't think it'll affect me from making, being objective in, in voting for this, and I understand that I'm obligated to vote. I just want it known that that relationship exists.
Thank you.
Pretty tangential, but, all right.
Councilmember Presian?
Well, again, I, I think with Mr. Beagle's situation, he's been in the community for decades, and he's been always volunteering and putting forth effort, not just Mr. Beagle, but Mrs. Beagle as well. So there are individuals in the community that give back, and they really care about South Lyon. So based upon the merit of his application and the references as well, I would be in favor of having Mr. Beagle sit on the Board of Ethics.
Is that a motion?
I'm just saying in general.
Oh, well, I'd make a motion that we, we have, or we impanel Don Beagle on, to the Board of Ethics.
I would second that.
I'd like to make a comment before we.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
I'm having a little bit of trouble with Mr. Beagle, just because of his behavior at the April 19 meeting, when he started yelling, and he was charging at the podium here at the end of the night. Yeah, I was very uncomfortable with him, and I, and I think that Board of Ethics, Safety Commission, I just cannot put him on either one of those. I'd love to see him on Planning Commission, Housing Commission, something else. But I, I'm not knocking him for volunteering. I'm happy to have a volunteer. I'm just very concerned about putting him on this particular one with how he made me feel that night.
Yep, Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
I, I would also agree with Ms. Walton is that the rage that I saw that night was absolutely frightening. And what bothered me the most, I, I don't mind people going to the microphone and getting angry and mad. It happens. What, what made this situation about a month ago unique was that he was about an inch away from the face of Lloyd Collins. His anger was out of control. It was threatening. I was scared, and nobody in this room, including you, did anything to control that situation. That was a very, very dangerous situation. That man was within reach of your gun. That was the problem. I, I saw it. I was here. He was no further than three and a half feet. Doesn't matter what he was mad about. I don't care what he was angry about. That was a rage that I have seen on the school board, when he was on school board and I was in the audience, and we were horrified then, and I was horrified a month ago. I did talk to another law enforcement agency and was told that any time an individual approaches a police officer with that kind of anger, and it's not under control, by either removing the individual or stepping back, you are not in control. And that was the problem. I, I was afraid he was going to reach for your gun. He was inches away from your face. I was here. I saw it, and all I heard was somebody say, "Hurry up and get out of here." And I, we grabbed our stuff, and we, we got out of here. So I, I agree. I, I think he volunteers. He does some nice work in the city. I, I haven't talked to the man personally, face to face, except at, at that meeting in almost seven years.
We got your point. All right.
Well, I, no, no, this is about people being able to come to a meeting, sit here at the table, and be able to leave without feeling threatened. I, I'm telling you, I, I'm angry at you, chief, for not controlling that situation, and I'm upset about the fact that it happened. But if he wants to sit in another commission, that's fine, but not on the Ethics Commission.
Chief Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My perspective was a little bit different. Yes, I was much closer to Mr. Beagle, and I had the opportunity to hear everything that he had to say. His comments were directed at me. They weren't directed at anybody else at the time that he was within a few feet of me. I had no time felt personally threatened. I had no time felt that anybody else was threatened. I believe it was Officer Stevens who may have been in the room at the same time. If Officer Stevens had perceived a threat, I would guarantee you that he would have been moving to my assistance, or I would have summoned assistants. I never felt threatened. I never felt out of control. Part of our training, police training, is when somebody approaches us, we normally turn with our weapon side away from them, which is the way that it was. Mr. Beagle, had he been so inclined, which I never, ever believed that he was so inclined, would have had to go through my body to get to my weapon, and that might have been a problem for Mr. Beagle or anyone else who tried it. Now, with that said, I'm going to go on to the comments of the conversation. The contents of the conversation were that Mr. Beagle, and yes, he was a little bit agitated, not threatening, was urging me to do a check to see if he had a concealed pistol license, like some people had accused him of having. In anticipation of this discussion, in anticipation of people saying that Mr. Beagle might be a threat, we did conduct a computer check on Mr. Beagle today, only for purposes of determining if he might be a threat, if he appeared at this meeting, and whether or not he has a concealed pistol license. Mr. Beagle does not possess a state of Michigan concealed pistol license. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Collins, for that clarity.
You have a motion and a second?
That is true. So, we have a motion and a second. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Oh, and thank you for volunteering.
You bet.
New business number seven.
So that's three people, right?
Correct.
That's a.
Do you want to do a roll call?
We could do a roll call if we'd like.
Just in case. Would you like a roll call?
No, I thought he was asking.
No, that, three people for the Ethics Board.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it's populated by five?
Correct. Three is a quorum.
Yeah.
New business number seven. Consider purchase of property at 501 McMunn.
I've had a couple of comments.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kivell.
The, the price that was suggested is just barely over, or under the 10% of its assessed value. I just did a real cheap Anzilo to, to get what they called a Zestimit or something, I think. It was a buck eighty-five, six. I was just thinking, this seems to me to be the type of thing that I would prefer, that we end up pushing down the road when we have a new city manager. Let them weigh in, and they can digest this a little bit, weigh in, and I, I love the idea of enhancing the abutting properties to the park, for McCatty Park. But nonetheless, I think I would prefer that we end up having the, the new manager make an assessment of this as well.
Councilmember Presian?
I had a couple of questions. So, did anyone contact Parks and Rec? Since this is going, Parks and Recreation?
Oh.
Since this is going to directly affect them?
Mr. Allen, would you mind approaching the microphone, please? Thank you. State your name and address, please.
Pat Allen. 11672 Crooked Lane.
Thank you.
Anyways, I went to Parks and Recs last week looking for, you know, I was pushing my snow idea, my snow festival and stuff like that. So I went to Parks and Rec, and they, they really liked the idea and all that, and, but they don't know, they don't really work for the city or anything like that. They said, "Well, you know, we don't work for the city." I said, "Well, I don't know. Where do you get your paychecks from?" But that was kind of personal. Didn't really get back to me on that, and I don't know. But I was just surprised that, you know, South Lyon, Parks and Rec, I just thought they worked for the city. But they're on their own. They like the idea. That's all I know. And they're excited about it, you know. And matter of fact, you see, we have a lot of young students here. I have that property that's right by the, by the tube mill there, right where the sled hill is, and I'm, I'm, I'm getting, I'm an old man, so I'm getting ready to sell it. I'm giving the city the first dibs on it, you know. But I was really promoting, you know, getting a snow machine to put snow on that sled hill so that you can use it from the end of November until April. And I mean, use it. When we get the heavy snows, that's a great, everybody uses it, and they're having a great time. And two days later, it's bare from all the traffic that, that the hill sees. So anyways, I promote that. I am selling this property, whether the city buys it or not, you know. I'm giving you a deal on it, and, and whatever. But, you know, you can push it along, and I'm hanging in there. I understand, you know, about getting another city manager, kind of let, throw it in his lap, but I'd keep it alive because, and I should have brought them, I get postcards, you know, from typical investors, get two or three. I should have brought the stack that I got received just in a month's time about investors. Of course, you know, they're willers and dealers, but so am I, you know, to, to buy my property because, you know, whatever reason. And eventually, I'm going to sell it. I can wait. I can buy the time, you know. But this is something I don't think you should really rush on. This is where I'm going to give you a fair shake on it, and if it's not a fair shake, don't buy it. And I told you, I'll finance it for you. You don't have the money now, you know. So, there's, but, and you wouldn't have to. If you don't kick my tenants out, you know, I've once been there for 22 years, okay? If you don't kick them out, you're making money. You're in the black. You can look at my tax returns, you know.
Councilmember Presian, go ahead.
So anyways, that's it. And you kids can kind of promote this thing about getting a snow, a snow machine. You know, and I also recommend having a teen center or a community center right there by the sled and mowing down the buildings that are there now. Anyways, I got the kids here now.
Thank you.
Glad to see you showing up. You probably had to, you know, it was an assignment for a lot of my kids when we went to South Lyon High.
Councilmember Presian?
Worth times a charm. Attorney Wilhelm, is there, has there been a title search on this property? Not yet?
I, because I have, it's just a little tidbit. I have naturally a full title and everything on it, and I got title insurance on it. And of course, you can do the search and everything like that, but I can bring you in all the documentation on it. And the one lot, the undeveloped lot that's next to the creek, is, I think, the last lot that can be a duplex in this town. You know, I mean, it's, and that's a plus for me when I go after the investors, you know, to be able to, I think it's the last lot available, undeveloped, that's made, that's, it's designed to be duplex, where you have special zoning for that.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
One thing the city could consider, and I don't know if you would be interested in, is giving the city a right of first refusal. Well, generally with those, you put, you know, a couple thousand dollars down, you, you get to keep the money regardless of whether we buy it or not, but you would be required to give us the right of first refusal if an offer came by.
Yes, and I'm not really sure. I, it's kind of like first option or something like, you have some set amount of money and stuff like that. I really don't know what's appropriate. I would definitely be willing to do something like that. And, and that would be, I don't know, you have like term limitation on it, like this is good for three years, and there's no.
Yeah, it all depends on what's negotiated.
Yeah, if you guys come up with something that, you know, seems like, you know, a win for both of us.
Well, the, the one thing is that the city would be providing an, an unrefundable, that would be the consideration for the right of first refusal, and you hold it open for as long as, as you and the city negotiate. Could be a year, maybe no more than a year. By then, we'll have a new city manager, and he or she will be able to sit down and present some options of what to do with the property. If, if, if it's decided later that we don't want it, fine.
Yeah.
But if you get an offer that comes in, and three, two, three, or a month later, after we sign the right of first refusal, and you say, "Hey, city, here, here's my offer. Can you match it because I'm going to sell the property?" Then we have a decision to make.
Okay.
And you don't lose the sale.
I, you know, I can, I can, I've, you know, I have to, actually have to have my attorney look at something like this.
That's the concept. I'm just.
Yeah, that's an idea, and that's, and, and.
I'm opposed to it.
I, I just, I definitely, I, I, I'm just presenting it to the city.
Yeah.
You guys can do what you want with it, and, you know, whatever, you know, and I'll go on my, eventually, I'm going to dispose of it eventually, you know, and whether the timeframe, it's not going to be in the next three months or something like that, you know, but eventually, you know, I'm getting out of the racket, you know.
I mean, the, the only downside of it is you would have to disclose that to a potential buyer, because a potential buyer may want to say, "You know, sir, I, I'm here. I have the money for cash. I want to close tomorrow."
That's, that's the whole thing. I, I probably, eventually, because I take into, you know, the, I don't want to disturb my tenants with the constant traffic of, with the regular commercial real estate and all that other stuff. I'll probably be going with a fast, I mean, and I'm talking about fast, and I've, I've sold property this way before, cash deals, you know, type of, and, and move rather quickly and all that, you know, so I don't disturb my tenants or anything like that. So now I'm actually getting kind of loadball, but I'm getting money. I just. I just sold a fourplex two years ago, you know, two hundred grand, cash, and, and we closed in ten days.
Yeah. Well, you're working with the city, so you would be able to, city would not be able to...
I, I, I understand about not...
Within forty-eight hours, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
I never know. I have six kids between twenty-one and twenty-eight, and I'm finding all kinds of stress and problems. I never know when I got to come up with a lot of money. So, so anyways, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, it's no big deal. You guys got, you know what I'm after.
Yeah, I'm just being honest with you.
I gave my, my, my presentation, uh, before you all have some additional information, uh, and, uh, you know, sit on it, maybe, maybe, uh, you know, five years from now, whatever, but I'm, I'm kind of itching to, to unload all my property everywhere. You know, I'm just trying to, I've, I've done it a long time and it's starting to wear me out.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
I have a comment on the situation. I, when I looked at this property, I think it's a, I think we, the city should certainly be looking into it. Now, Glenn, your point is, uh, has been heard and received. I have no problem with that. Would we entertain a motion to readdress this, say, at the August twenty-seventh meeting? See where we're at with the whole city manager search? Is that too soon?
Well, you don't need a city manager to enter into a, a right of first refusal.
True.
And, and that would buy you some time.
I'm open, I'm open for all that. I just don't think, I would hate to see this property, it is connected to McCatty Park. I mean...
Questions is going to be what he'll accept?
Right. I just, I certainly, I think the city should explore all avenues on this property as far as...
I think we should come back and talk about this, especially so that'll give you the opportunity to discuss it with your attorney. It'll give us the opportunity to discuss with Parks and Rec, do a title search, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, he'll be required under closing to provide clear title. I don't, I mean, the right of first refusal is just, just to hold the property right now.
He said he would hold it.
Okay. Well, so, whatever...
I'll say something.
Go.
Postpone it to Lynn.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
The city's missed the opportunity on a number of occasions to buy the properties that were adjacent to it, okay? And, uh, I would hate to see us miss this opportunity to, um, to not acquire this land. I know exactly what would happen with this property after a few years. It would become, uh, rezoned to light industrial, which is across the street, I believe, and they'd have boat rentals and, and, uh, UV storage and things like that there, because nobody's going to build an expensive home next to the, the, the front end of the factory. It's, it'd be inexcusable for us not to purchase that property, okay? Because of the, the security it would give us as far as the, uh, the atmosphere of, of our parkland and the, the people walking through and everything. It would be a disaster. And, and the property that's adjacent to it, to his lot two, is owned by, uh, Johnsons across the, across the creek, triangular piece. That's where they stacked the firewood over there. Eventually, I would hope we could get that piece, okay? It's just a leftover piece cut by the Yerkes drain. But anyway, I, if we, uh, I definitely think if right of a first refusal is the, the way to go, recommended, I'll take your word for it, Councilman Kurtzwell. But I would be in favor of, uh, telling the man we'd give him a, a ten percent deposit going forward or something on, on a deal. But we'd have to do that within thirty, another thirty days, I suppose. That's it.
Does anyone have anything else on the matter? Councilmember Kennedy?
Basically, I, I think that there's a lot of activities here that could be addressed prior to getting a new city manager in, in place. I think the interest is there to, uh, to obtain that piece of property. I think there's, uh, like I said, some preliminary work that, uh, that could be, be investigated, coordinated with Parks and Rec, uh, looking at the piece of property, having it assessed, having a, uh, a broker evaluate, whatever the case might be. And I think it would behoove us to have the interim city manager begin that process, end discussions with its right of first refusal and everything else that goes along with that, with the, uh, the property owner.
I, I'd let the city attorney do that. That right of first refusal is a pretty technical agreement. You need to have a...
But again, just somebody is responsible for getting with Parks and Rec and everything else. And, uh, that's a good point, Councilmember Kurtzwell, to bring the, the attorney in to do that.
Well, it's a very sophisticated document.
Tim, would you have any problem with that?
Nope.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a motion on the table?
I'd make the motion that, uh, that we direct the interim city manager to, uh, begin negotiations and investigation for purchase of that property with the, the property owner and coordinating that investigation with Parks and Rec and, uh, begin the discussion to identify what it would actually take to purchase it and whether it, uh, would fit in with the, uh, the plans for Parks and Recreation.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Allen. New business number eight. Consider recognition of Baseball Boosters as a nonprofit organization for charitable gaming license. I'll give you a little background on this. Uh, I believe it's the South Lion High School Baseball Boosters. Tried to get this on the last agenda, um, and they were not able to because of the time that they got it here. This should really just be a rubber stamp. I didn't know if anyone had any questions about it.
No questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
I move to approve local governing body resolution for charitable gaming licenses, recognizing South Lion Baseball Boosters as a nonprofit organization in the community for the purpose of obtaining charitable gaming licenses.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. New business number nine. Consider youth assistance agreement. Recommendation for this agenda item is to approve this agreement.
I'll do it.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
I recommend a motion to, uh, to authorize the interim city manager to execute the proposed agreement with the South Lion area youth assistance program for fiscal year twenty eighteen through nineteen in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. It's a great asset.
Absolutely.
New business number ten. Consider approval of Hagadorn Street sewer cleaning and televising. Recommendation is to approve HRC to contract with Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services LLC to perform cleaning and televising of the sewer line on Hagadorn Street and storm sewer on Mill Street. We have adequate funds available in the current budget under line item four, five, one, dash, nine, six, nine, dash, two, zero, three. Contribution local streets to make this purchase. Councilmember...
Any questions?
Whoop, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Presian, go ahead.
I do. I am, I'm not well-versed in exactly how this works, so could you first explain it? And then also, is this something that the water department can do on their own without having to hire HRC?
Well, it's not HRC, it's actually a third party, um, that does the televising. And no, we, we don't have any equipment to do that with.
Okay.
We can do some cleaning, but part of their job is they clean it and televise it as they go. Um, and what they do is they provide, uh, a televi- televised, it's pretty, um, descriptive as far as how, how clear and everything it is, and they, they look at all the pipes, look at cracks in the pipes, um, they look at all the connections, make sure there's no problems there. Ten years ago, when they, I think it was ten years ago, when they did this last time, there was some issues. They talked about lining it, but it's been ten years since they did that.
Right.
And we want to make sure before we repave Hagadorn, if we need to replace that sewer, we want to take those steps first, then replace the pavement, so...
Well, that makes sense.
Follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Is this common practice? So, when you say, "Last time we did this, did we televise it last time or no?"
Yes.
Okay.
It was done, there was a bigger project done at that time. We just wanted, HRC's, uh, recommendation to us was to verify that, that sewer needed work, which we're assuming it does, but we want to verify that. While they're here, there's another little s- storm sewer on Mill Street. We figured we'd hit that while they were here as well. Kill two birds with one stone.
I, I know you have not been here a long time, but I do have a question. And I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, maybe you could help, Chief Collins or anyone that was here at that time. Was this done before we did the repaving of Pontiac Trail going through the city of South Lion? And that, and that was a problem that came up with the pipes under the street?
I'm going to plead ignorant there. No, I do not know.
Yeah, I'm going to plead that it was the county drain commission responsibility, so I think if it was, it might have been the county that would have...
Okay. I just, when I read this, obviously, we drive that road every day, the last thing, the residents of Hagadorn have waited a long time for this. I would hate to see, um, a nice, beautiful road have to get torn up for something that we didn't take preventative care on, so I definitely am behind this.
And again, it, it's looking like, and I wish he was still here, but some of those sewer funds might be used with this project too, so...
Okay.
Um, and again, this is kind of stuff that's going to pop up, just like we had that other one that, you know, that's why we have those sewer funds available to, to do that work.
Councilmember Walton, did you have something? Oh, sorry, chief.
Just, I, I can wait.
Yeah.
I was going to make the motion.
Okay, chief, go ahead.
It was just going to be a point of clarification that this is to award the bid for, to award the contract to the low bid.
Okay.
I got a question.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Uh, Mike, if it turns out that, uh, when they make their inspection, they're experts in this field and, and they can, it comes out beautiful, okay? Right off the bat, okay?
We, but we already know there was problems last time, but we're hoping if they're there, we can line it. If not, it might escalate into actually replacing it.
Okay, well, there are going to be problems somewhere, but this other leg here, um, the Mill Street leg that you're going to look at, um, if that is clear enough that it's not going to need any repairs, uh, then do you have the flexibility with this company under this contract to just go look at another trouble spot here in town somewhere?
No, it's only, we're only, they're only contracted to do what we've asked them to do.
They can't switch to another street if it's not necessary? Okay.
In the Mill Street one, we're, we're getting a sinking of the, uh, the asphalt underneath the, or above the storm drain, so that's why we want to take a look at it, make sure the integrity of it.
I thought it's all concrete.
The what?
Mill Street.
Well, it is. What I'm saying, it's starting to, uh, the road's starting to cave in a little bit there.
Oh.
So we think there's a leak or a crack or something. We don't know if we can fix it or we can, need to replace it, so same thing.
Councilmember Kivell?
I'm just kind of curious, do you have an anticipated escalation in what the project costs were, will be if, if in fact this has to be replaced?
No, that's going to be an HRC question. I mean, they can probably throw that together in a pretty short amount of time.
No, I'm kind of curious, in the event that, uh, that that takes place, you, you had contracted this emergency replacement of the, you know, the, the stuff at the end of that forest main.
Right.
So, HRC wasn't involved in that. Everything's flowing the way it's supposed to flow.
Right.
Every time we end up getting HRC and invested in our projects, the, the costs escalate by, at very least, by twenty-five percent.
Oh, yeah.
Are you entertaining the idea at all that we'll end up relying on capable contractors to actually run storm that will work right?
The, the only issue there is, is if we have to pull a permit to replace that under a normal contract, um, you just got to have, you got to have engineering work done. You have to. I know on the water side, it's, it's mandatory, I, and the sewer side, I'm pretty sure it is too, unless it's an emergency repair like we did on the other one.
Mm-hmm.
And again, we didn't get into structures there. All we replace is just the existing line from manhole to manhole. This case, we might have to replace a couple of structures as well.
You said that it's contractual, that we have to use HRC for sewer?
No, no, it's not contractual, it's, it's, we have to use an engineer, not necessarily them.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Because we'll probably have to pull a permit to do it.
Is that for state?
Yeah, for state purposes, yeah.
And sewer is a particular animal, so that's, seems appropriate.
Are they doing sanitary and storm?
Just the, they're, they're doing the sanitary on Hagadorn and they're doing the storm on Mill Street. And Mill Street's just underneath the road. It's a small section.
All right.
Councilmember Walton?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the awarding of contract to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services LLC in performing the cleaning and televising of sewer line on Hagadorn Street and storm sewer on Mill Street for the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
New business number eleven. Consider approval of pilot local road improvement program agreement. At this time, I'd like to welcome, uh, Oakland County Commissioner Phil Wyper down to the microphone, if you'd like to give us some details on, on this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, the pilot program is a program started by the county. We've always had the tri-party program where the county kicked in a third of projects. We determined that the cities weren't benefiting as much because most of the roads were county roads, and that didn't allow a city to invest in the, roads, um, roads that are under the jurisdiction of the city only. So we created a pilot, um, program. We, um, started in sixteen. This year is a million and a half going, so, and it's, it's, it's allowed under state law for economic development, so as long as the project is going to spur some economic development, the county can use county funds to, um, to local roads. So, the program's continuing and, uh, this year, um, I made sure the chief was aware of the deadlines and, and, um, DPW director was aware of the deadlines, they didn't miss it. And we're happy to, um, uh, let all the cities get money throughout the county, so...
Well, thank you very much.
That's what's going on.
Everything helps, yeah. Terrific.
Did anyone...
Yeah, the, the city, the tri-party, turned out the cities were not benefiting as much because tri-party was only for county roads.
Gotcha.
And while many county roads do go through municipalities, but a lot of the jur- roads that were under the jurisdiction of cities did not benefit.
Gotcha.
So this program benefits cities and villages.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Wyper, uh, for the clarification and details.
Any questions on it?
And your work to get that done. Did anyone have anything else for Mr. Wyper?
Oh, certainly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Well, what, what does this mean? I mean, basically, what does this mean? That...
The county, the county, the...
Now, there's a dollar amount in here of five hundred and fifty. The total cost of the Hagadorn project is going to be five hundred and fifty thousand.
This city, the county is, this time is thirty thousand dollars for, it's a million five divided between all the cities and villages. And based on the allocation formulas of, of the tri-party formula, we've gone to the cities and villages and distributed a million five across, on a pro-rata basis, across all cities. So...
It was $25,349 that we're getting allocated to the city to help with the Hagadorn project.
It's a 50-50 match.
Okay, so what are we spending?
We have to spend that exact amount in that project, which we're expending a lot more than that on that project.
We don't know what the project's-
This is, it's been budgeted for Hagadorn for last year, and we're moving it to next year's budget.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, there's 400,000 in the road budget, and then there's 150 in, I think, professional services or contractual services. It's combined 550,000 to redo that road.
So, the county is giving us $25,000 towards this project?
We've created this, this year, it's a million five spread across cities and villages.
Okay.
And it's based upon allocation-
And you have to have an existing road project for it to be, you know, acceptable, and also you have to have the matching funds. So, if you did just a small section, you could do the same thing, but in this case, we already had a huge project, and this is just to help with the costs as well.
Okay, perfect.
This is, this is, the county is not normally, there's the county road commission, which is totally a separate entity and funded, totally separate. This is county funds, which are not normally allowed to be given for road projects. But since it's economic development, the tri-party program was created, and then cities were not getting a fair share because under the jurisdiction of city roads only. So, we started a pilot program, and this money is available for cities and villages.
So, this is a way for the road commission?
This is the county-
Right, but, but this is a way for the road commission to get city roads done through a different vehicle? Because the road commission can only do county roads, right?
But it's the county funding, not the road commission.
This is county money that is not-
That's coming from the Board of Commissioners.
Board of Commissioners, that is not normally allowed to go to cities, villages, and townships. But then the state statute was, they passed a state statute that allowed it for economic development. So, we created the tri-party fund, which has been going on for years, and then cities noticed that roads under city jurisdiction were not eligible for that fund. Well, Pontiac Trail and Ten Mile can be a county road, which are in our city.
Yeah.
But that is not under the jurisdiction of the city. So, we created a pilot program and put it, this is the third year. This year is a million and a half, and it'll be spread directly to cities and villages.
Well, Hagadorn needs it.
Yes, so. But it is, it's tied to economic development. That's county fund, county commission funds cannot be used on roads except for, allowed by state statute.
Okay.
Not road commission.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Wyper. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the local road improvement matching fund pilot program cost participation agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. With us accomplishing a second reading of the liquor license earlier, we can skip number 12, and we'll move on to number 13.
Skip, okay.
Consider fund balance policy.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. I think, this was brought up at the budget meeting, and I think now, since we're almost close to the budget, we don't have to really approve this tonight by any means, but at least maybe talk about it and see whether or not council is still interested in setting a fund balance policy. I think Brian sort of spoke to the merits of a fund balance policy. I think it's probably a good check system to have. All the points that Brian covered in the budget policy are actually in this particular policy. The only issues that, and I just put numbers in here just as a placeholder, so that you could sort of get a feel for how it works. But if council's not interested in doing anything, we don't have to do it either. So, I'll sort of let council direct how they wanna go on this.
Councilmember Friesen?
So, I guess for me, I, I'm not comfortable with this. I'm all in favor of a general fund policy and having a resolution, and I would actually like to see an ordinance written, because I am in favor of the foundation of what it stands for. However, the way this is drafted, it's actually very restrictive in the sense that, first of all, if you look at the second whereas, we're talking about mitigating risks, but we're not elaborating risk of, risk of what? Are we talking about unforeseen revenue fluctuations? Are we talking about anticipate, unanticipated expenditures? What are the risks? That needs to be expounded upon. I think you need to make it as clear as possible when you have an ordinance or resolution, what you're working with. That's one of the things I also take issue with. And then, moving on from that, that same provision, we limit ourselves in the purpose. So, we need to expound upon that as well. So, if the city is only doing these things, short-term borrowing, building financial reserves, and unanticipated one-time expenditures, you're very limited. So, I think we should expound upon that. I don't think it should be this restrictive. Furthermore, when I looked at other communities and what they had, they had definitions set forth, and it was actually really nice. You could go through, and you can see, well, what is a general fund balance? As a layperson, how would you know? So, it was very well-written for other communities where they gave definitions of a general fund balance, they gave definitions of everything. And that's usually in an ordinance format, not a resolution format. An ordinance is a little bit more expressive, and a little bit more fluid. So, generally municipal law, when you're trying to get something through, you usually have an ordinance that will spell this out for you. Also, there's a lot of commentary in here, for example, for example, and then it provides examples of how it's relevant to South Lyon. But when you're setting law, you're not using commentary, you're just being matter-of-fact. So, if you look at a normal statute, it doesn't use commentary. It sets forth, it sets forth the law, and then later, if you look further down, it'll give you some commentary about how it works. So, I think we need to remove all the commentary in here, all the four examples, the comments. If you have to give an example in your work, you're not being clear. You're not clear enough. So, the way that this is formatted, I'm not comfortable with it. This is not the standard that municipalities set themselves to. It's actually very confusing, and the lingo isn't right, the structure isn't right. It's riddled with grammatical errors and structural errors. So, again, I have no problem with the idea of adopting an unassigned general fund balance policy. I would just feel more comfortable if we had somebody who was well-versed in what they're doing, maybe Tim. I don't know who drafted this, but whoever should take a look at it and give it to somebody who is a little bit more well-versed.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Yes, I drafted this and did a lot of research on it, and the first thing that I found out is that a lot of communities do not have this as an ordinance. And the reason is, if you do the research, you'll find out, is that when you make it as an ordinance, it becomes too firm, and as a policy, policies are meant and designed to change according to the changes in the budget. So, this is not an ordinance thing, so from a municipal law perspective, that it would be inappropriate to put this into an ordinance. Whenever you're drafting policies, the thing that you don't wanna do is you don't wanna, what I have down here, it's shortfalls. Actually, this is language that came out of other ordinances for other municipalities, emergency needs and mitigating risk. You don't wanna be too defining as to what the risk is, because the risk could be many things. Remember, it's a policy that you are trying to follow, but yet there may be times where maybe you're not quite meeting the policy, and you don't wanna be found in violation of it, and you want a little bit of wiggle room in your policy drafting. So, this is actually an excellent provision that is here. And example number one, for example, the commentary is only there to provide an example. Remember, it says draft on the document, so whenever you see draft on a document, that generally means that it's in process of being changed, and that it is what it is. It's a draft. And many times, when you're drafting policies, a seasoned individual who does drafting of policies notes that sometimes it's easy for people to understand where that policy is going, as you give an example. The examples in the commentaries fall out of the policy once the actual policy has been adopted. The numbers in here are just numbers to sort of look at and, and discuss. Those are the kind of policies, those numbers are not there to be firm, but to be discussed. Probably one of the best provisions that are in here that I've received a lot of really good compliments on is paragraph number four, because it really, really states what that general fund balance should avoid doing. And that is, is that you shouldn't be dipping into that general fund balance for recurring operating expenditures. Like, you shouldn't be going to it, you know, every six months because, you know, you've had an increase in salaries to pay wages, utility bills, and, and it's pretty clear here what you should not be doing, because your council will change from election to election, and some people will be on council that may have a financial background, and people may not. So, the policy tells you what you can use the funds for and what you cannot use the funds for. And that's why it's in there, you know, telling you that if the general fund is used to pay for operating expenditures, which it should not be used, you should set out a strategy to prohibit the use of the fund balance monies, and it should be addressed by council, by the city manager or your chief financial officer. So, this is a very, very good instructive policy. Maybe, you know, if you're not used to seeing these policies, you may not necessarily understand what the policy is about. But it's meant to be a discussion item, and if council wants to go forward, it's great. I know Brian didn't have any problems with it. Tim can always take a look at it and add his two cents to it. Or council may just say, hey, you know, we're moving along fine. We don't need to deal with this issue. And, but most, most communities have a policy with respect to their fund balance, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Sure.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I don't have any misgivings with the idea of having a policy for general fund balance. This is another thing that I think we're, we've got a new city manager that'll be coming on board. There's no urgency for us to end up acting on this now, so I think that we should-
No, that's a good comment.
I can finish my sentence. I think that it's, it warrants us just being patient and allowing them to digest where we are and what the implications of this might end up being, so.
I have one more.
Councilmember Friesen, go ahead.
So, can we expound on provision number seven? The general fund balance should be analyzed each fiscal year after the financial statement audit. So, who? Who's auditing this, and who's reporting it? What is this?
Well, who audits your statements?
You need to be specific, though. We may know that, but-
No, you don't. That's the problem. You don't, you don't need to be-
Well, hang on, I was talking. I'm so sorry. Just a moment. In my, in my experience working in municipal government, I just, I think if you're a layperson reading this, and you go to our website, and you pull it up, and you don't understand, or you don't know maybe what the definitions are, you're not understanding what you're reading. This should flow. For number seven, we may understand, and we may know, but for an individual who's reading this provision, who specifically is auditing us, and who's, who's reporting to us? I think it's important to expound on those specifics, not for our benefit, but for the benefit of residents in South Lyon, or maybe individuals outside of South Lyon who may like this resolution, may like this ordinance, if we do an ordinance, and wants to adopt it. We need to set a good standard, and I think this is where, I'm not saying that we shouldn't adopt this. I'm just saying that we need to be a little bit more clear.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
It's pretty clear. It says the general fund balance, which is what we're talking about, should be analyzed, should, each fiscal year. We know what the fiscal year is for our city.
Do we?
After the financial statement audit. So, and this financial statement audit comes out in October. We know that.
We know that.
So, but this, this is a tool for internal management and for budgeting. But I do agree that, that this is a document that we could give to the new city manager and allow him or her to sort of do it, but at least I'm gonna keep it on the radar and bring it back in, in the fall. But at least we, it seems we have a consensus that it's probably a professional budgeting document that we should be working with at some point.
I agree. I like the idea. I think we definitely need to keep it in our eyes of goals going forward. Maybe we do wait until we get our new city manager in place, and I appreciate you bringing it back to the table, because it is important, and I felt the same way at the, at the budget meeting. So, do we wanna, do we have to make a motion on this? Is this something, because I would hate for it to fall between the cracks, but I know, I know you won't allow that.
No, I will.
I'll make a motion.
I'll bring it up in September.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Did anyone have anything else to add to that?
That's fine.
Okay, great. Moving on to number 14 of New Business today, consider retainer agreement for attorney services. Now, give me just a moment. I'd like to explain this topic. The current retainer agreement for the city attorney services expires on June 30th, 2018. City council has the option to renew the current agreement, subject to renegotiated fees, or to direct the interim city manager to issue a request for proposals for city attorney services. If a request for proposals was issued, several law firms would be chosen to make presentations to a selection committee. A recommendation would subsequently be made to city council for authorization to enter into a new retainer agreement.
No opinion. Open to discussion.
Councilmember Kennedy, please.
You know, just looking at the lay of the land right now in the city, we have a number of issues that we're dealing with, and looking for a new interim city manager, looking for new utility superintendent, and some other issues. There's something to be said about a little bit of consistency. I'm wondering if the law firm of Johnson-Rosati would be interested in entertaining, you know, perhaps a one-year extension to get through and allow us the time to address some of these issues that we're dealing with right now, and then come back and revisit this, this contract at that time. If it's something that they would be willing to entertain, and present it to them, and discuss it with them.
Yeah, I can take that back to my firm, and I'm sure we could, I would like to run it by the firm management, but I would expect that to be an affirmative response.
And again, obviously, I don't speak for the council. It's my opinion. I don't know where the council stands as far as that recommendation.
I actually, I think that is a great idea. Councilmember Friesen, go ahead.
I disagree.
Okay.
I disagree respectfully, but here's the thing. I understand Johnson-Rosati has been through the wringer with South Lyon, and we have dragged your name through the mud, and it's not pretty. But at the same time, I have nothing but the utmost respect for your firm and the work that you do, and I would like to renew the contract. I would like to keep Johnson-Rosati. I've never been dissatisfied with your work. So, I mean, I would hate to see us lose Johnson-Rosati, and I would, if we can get him for just a year, that's fine, but if we can have you for three, I'd keep you for three.
Anybody?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, Tim, you're doing a great job, you know, just a great job. So, whatever council wants to do, one year or three years, doesn't make any difference to me.
Well, I'm interested in getting some sense of what the escalation in costs will be. So, it's come to my understanding that you haven't taken advantage of the, the aspect of the second and third escalation in the existing contract?
Yeah, so the, I think our normal municipal billing rate is, give or take, around that 150 mark. With the retainer agreement, that comes out to, I believe it's 112 an hour for the 80 hours. We'd certainly like to get that 150. But I understand what's going on in the city. I'd like to take a look at my numbers, and in the past, this was delegated to basically a committee of council, and have somebody that I could bounce this stuff off of, short of bringing every little thing to council. Because you don't really have the time before June 30th, potentially, to deal with all those little things. But I don't know that there's that many moving parts unless there's a desire to change something drastically.
Well, I think that some of my concerns lie in the fact that there's been, especially recently, it seems as though there's some things that we've been kind of waiting for information from you that seem to take a lot longer than what anybody had anticipated. The other aspect of this is when we took Johnson-Rosati on as our, our law firm, it was with the expectation that you have such a deep bench that in the event that anybody had a lack of understanding of something pretty comprehensively right out of the gates, you'd be able to resource to people that are in your firm to be able to get that information as rapidly as was necessary to meet our needs. Oftentimes, that hasn't been the case, and you're, you're finding yourself doing all the research cold, and that wasn't my understanding of where we were going to go from. Please.
Mr. Mayor, I would disagree that we have not provided service timely or at the level of expertise that you've expected. I don't know that a public meeting is where I wanna have the details come out, but I'd certainly like to talk to you about where you think we've missed providing that level of service that you expect, so that we can address it. For example, you've had a personnel matter come up. We brought people in. I sought out-
Well, that was a stellar one. Now, I mean, you guys nailed that one.
We've done that in a lot of cases. So, I'd be very interested to hear what you think we've missed on, and I'd certainly take that constructively.
Mm-hmm.
You know, my job is to-
This isn't meant as a slam, but yeah.
Not taking it as one. That's all. I just, you know, I'd like to hear if you think we're missing.
Okay. I also heard a characterization of, in the event that we were to put this out to bid, that Johnson-Rosati might not entertain the idea of rebidding this. That causes me a great deal of concern, in that if I don't feel that your firm has the full backing of supporting this community, I have a little discomfort about the idea of using you as our sole provisioner of legal services. I'd like to end up understanding that the firm will do whatever it takes to end up getting us what we need, as I'm sure that you're doing for the other municipal clients that you have. And if, if you don't think that they may end up following up with another RFP, that leads me to believe that they really don't take us that seriously.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I don't think that it's, we don't take the city seriously. I mean, we've represented the city for five years, and personally, I would like to continue to do that. I'm not the only voice in my firm, and in the past several years, there've been some bumps along the way that have raised questions with some of my partners about whether this is worth it.
We've certainly challenged you guys. I get that.
I'm trying to be diplomatic. You know, I, I personally want to continue, and, you know, I, I think the context in which I may have made any kind of reference to that- I may have made any kind of reference to that was in the context of that bumpiness, and if it goes out for bid, our bills are all out there, right? So, you guys require our bids to be part of the public packet, that goes out. Everybody's going to have information about how much time we're putting in, what we're making on a month-to-month basis, and be able to come up with a bid. I would expect that somebody will undercut us, and I don't think that we're in a position to go down in a bid.
That makes sense.
Somebody else's ability to undercut you doesn't give them carte blanche to get the gig, though.
True.
So, I mean...
And I don't mean to cut you off.
No, no.
Certainly, if you want to send this out for bid, that's something that...
No, I don't want to. I want to have a comfort level that you guys will do what it takes to end up making us protected by the legal system and what you guys bring to the party. I want to feel fully...that you're fully engaged in making us as protected as we can be.
I spoke with Chuck Snell, who does the prosecutions. He speaks very highly of his work with the police department, with the city. He wants to continue.
That's a terrific relationship. That's not the tough part.
I am constantly talking with our municipal group about how to deal with your questions. It may appear to some of council that I'm doing all the work, but I am the primary contact. There's a team and a bench behind me, and we have, on occasion, gone and gotten somebody to do the work. If that needs to be done, we will do that. That's part of the...my job. But a lot of it is me going inside my firm to get the answers and take care of it directly with the city.
Thank you, Ms. Will. Councilmember Kurzweil, you've been waiting.
I think some of the issues, Tim, are directly related to the city. You know, we're in transition, and I think it's been very difficult for you when the wheels have changed, you know, almost 24 hours, 24 hours, there's a new story, there's a new emergency, there's a new this. I am hopeful that the new city manager will have a little bit more of a legal sense of things that can sit down and work with you. I think it's just been too spotty in the past, and I think you've been sort of left to pick up a lot of pieces. And I think you've done a great job doing it, but I think it also puts you in a tough position, too, because you're not the city manager, but yet you're kind of acting like the city manager. You're not the city manager, but yet you're kind of trying to help out as best you can, and I think you've done a good job at it. So, I think what we need to do is get a new city manager in here, and that is coming, and I think a lot of these things just go away. So, just bear with us.
If I may, you know, I really enjoy working with the city. I want to be involved in seeing this, the momentum in the city build, and to put it in a way, turn the corner. I think you're ready to do that. I think getting the pieces in place, you know, I've had the opportunity to work with a number of city managers already in the city. I think there is some inconsistency issues that have led to questions about, you know, what is my job, what I'm asked to do, but I'm happy to do it, and I want to continue to do that. And if you want...if you prefer to work out an extension, we'd be happy to do that. We can certainly talk about the length of time. However, if you want to send it out for bid and see if you're getting the best attorneys for the best price, that's certainly within your prerogative to do so.
You know, I do think that the idea of the new city manager is...could end up being exactly the solution to this, because you've been handling so many things that were actual kind of trying to run the city in absent a full-time city manager, that clearly, that's going to end up impacting what you're doing for us legally. I mean, you're trying to actually help us to function and get through the regular course of business. So, somebody that has all of that attended, sitting in that corner office, gives you the ability to end up just focusing on what our legal issues are, so.
Chief Collins has been great to work with. He's detail-oriented, he stays on things, he follows through. It's been very...it's been a pleasure to work with him. That being said, that's a factor that I think both sides of this should take into consideration if that's the avenue that you choose to go down. Pushing some of that away to staff may free up, change time, the amount of hours spent on certain things, which may change the experience you're having with respect to billing and retainer and so forth. So, that's certainly an issue that I will be taking a look at it. It will be difficult to quantify, but maybe there's a way we can address that concept.
Councilmember Presian, thank you for your patience.
No problem. So, I appreciate your zeal and your enthusiasm to stay with the city, and we love having you, but your firm is what I'm concerned about, because the last two and a half years specifically have been very rough for your firm. We have been very rough on you, and the legal community is fairly small, so your reputation is everything. So, in my eyes, if we put ourselves in the shoes of Johnson-Rosati, the firm, and we see like everything that we've put you through, I wouldn't be surprised if you didn't want to put your bid in. I wouldn't be surprised if you ask for significantly more than what you're asking for, because your work is fantastic, but at the same time, is it worth the stress of what your firm has to go through? So, that's just my take on it.
Go ahead.
I mean, I'm not...
She didn't mean that about the money.
I appreciate that. But I'm not inclined to be looking for like a hazard pay kind of concept.
No, I understand.
I enjoy working with the city. I think we're looking to, you know, I have an idea of what I'm looking for. I'd like to put something together, share it with the city, and see if it's acceptable, what the range is, whatever, wherever we're at, and move from there.
I'd like to say something.
Councilmember Richards, please.
I would certainly like to make a comment that I would like to see us stick together for at least another year, okay, and see if we can't get through the bumps and the rough areas that we have experienced. Nothing is going to be the last stand or anything like that, and I don't think there's...I don't know how many firms are out there in the municipal world of lawyering, but I got a hunch that a lot of firms wouldn't want to touch us with a 10-foot pole, with all the problems we've had, okay? So, I think we're better off sticking with Johnson-Rosati at this time. By all means, if they don't hang on, I hope they don't just throw us to the wind to let us fend for ourselves and get somebody else out. We'd be in a hole. We'd be in rough shape. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
I kind of get the feeling that people aren't opposed to a new three-year contract. I think that if anybody has issues, they call you and talk to you privately about it and move forward with it. I think it'd be great to have you for another three years. You know the city, you know the players, you know what people's expectations are, and I think that you become an asset in terms of, as we move forward. I look at it here, once we get a new city manager, I really, really think that it will become a very normal kind of, this is the way it is. I look at it this way. You only become a good lawyer not by doing the ordinary or the status quo. You become a really, really good lawyer by taking on the difficult projects, the tough projects, the ones that really challenge you both mentally and academically. That's what makes a really, really good lawyer. And I will tell you this, Tim, you are a far better lawyer today than when you first came here, because I think the battles, whatever they are, have really seasoned you to a very, very valuable attorney, because you've got that skill set now that you can foresee and anticipate issues. You're able to solve in your document drafting far better. I mean, it really...it's been a real joy. It really has. So, I'd like to see another three years. So, we should go...that's just me, but if the rest of council is, then...
I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah.
I'd like to make the motion that we request an updated retainer agreement for the city attorney services from Johnson-Rosati, for consideration by the city council.
For three years.
For three years.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Forgive me for this. These were scribbled on here last minute. I guess I'll just go to the agenda note over here. The explanation of topic 15, "The monthly rent for the city-owned rental property at 464 South Lafayette has not been increased since 2008. Council expressed an interest in bringing the rental charge in line with current market for this area." Councilmember Kennedy, please.
I asked Chief Collins to add this to the agenda. We've gone through the process of performing a number of repairs at the rental property. We've charged basically the same rental costs at the property since 2008. It's been a 30-day rental. I think it's time to look at what similar properties would rent for in the city, and I'd recommend that we direct the interim city manager to investigate that and bring the rental for that property in line with comparable properties.
I second.
What was that, a motion?
Oh, it was kind of a motion.
Okay. I thought I missed it.
I'll make the motion that we direct the interim city manager to do that investigation, to look at the rental costs for comparable properties and come forward with a recommendation on what the rental cost should be for that city property.
I second. Could I have a discussion on that, please?
Absolutely. Tim, that's one of those issues, a cleanup job. You know, if it quacks like a duck and walks like a duck, it's a duck. And the document that I looked at says letter of understanding when actually it looks like it's actually a lease. So, just wanted to suggest that since the city is taking a look at possibly raising the rent, is to get that document in the appropriate form and get it into lease form. I also like to remind, which I'm sure you already know, that this is a consumer lease on residential property, it's not commercial, so you might have to have the truth in renting disclosures in it and the safety deposit disclosures in it. So, I think that's why that is a very good reason as to why this document should be redrafted, so that you have some compliance with state law on the disclosures. But you already knew that, so.
Did anyone have anything else to add on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to number 16. Councilmember Kurzweil added this. Forgive me, it's in Cliff Notes form as well, a discussion regarding a counteroffer to DPW supervisor Michael Bovin.
I'm just going to start this off and say, I've had very few disappointments in the city since I've been on city council, and I really, I really haven't. You know, I'm a warrior. I can deal with the crap. Friday was a tough day. It was a real tough day, Mike, and I'll tell you why. You have brought a lot of hope to a lot of people in this city. You just sort of took things and ran with it, and it was clear, at least to me, as I sat back and observed and listened, that you were adept at what you were doing, very qualified. People really liked you, things were moving and getting along, and I think there was hope that things were going to change in the city, that you were bringing that sense of drive, that sense of, I'm going to clean up this DPW facility, we're going to move things into the 21st century, and you're very well-liked. Friday was raining, and I talked with, I don't know, five or six people that either called me because they had heard something and wanted to check it out, or I was talking to them and mentioned it, and every person said, this cannot be, this cannot be, this cannot be. So, I just wanted to say that for the short time that you've been here, you've been a real blessing, and I know I've hung my hat on you, and I'm not ready to let you go, if you know what I mean. I don't know you well, haven't been to lunch, haven't been over to the facility to sit down and chat with you, except for once, and I think Steve was there, and I just think that you coming on board represent the new South Lion. You know, breaking with the old and coming in with somebody that had the experience that you had, showing us new ways, and I'm still upset that this news is out there. So, I wanted to sort of chat with you, and if you were willing, we don't have to do it here, but if you were willing to sit down, I'd like to have Steve Kennedy there. Steve Kennedy has experience in hiring, he has an industrial background. I think he has a value for what your services are worth, and I think that the city needs to wake up, and they need to understand that if you want to be a professional city, if you want to have professional talent in here, if you want your city to move forward, then you're going to need to pay for professional talent. The days of saying, do me a favor and work for this, I think are done. The reason other cities are moving forward is because they are making the commitment to some of their salaries. And as I spoke with people over the weekend, professionals that do some recruiting, it was explained to me, you need to understand your pool of applicants. If you today were going to look for a new chief of police, the pool of applicants...I 'm not saying that because, chief, you could be here another 20 years. This is an example. The pool of applicants would be very, very large, because every cop would be looking for that job. And not only every cop that presently has a job, but every cop that retired, that retired at 52 or 55, that may want to work another 15 years. They also are in that pool of applicants. As the pool becomes larger, the salaries drop, and then your next level is your city managers. You have a pool of city managers. It's not as large as the pool for the police chief, but it's a big pool. The pool for somebody like you that is managing both utilities in the city, that has the degrees, and I just want to make sure I understand this, do you have an MBA?
I do.
An unbelievable, a master's in business administration. Nobody can believe that somebody of your credentials is sitting here in South Lion. I'm just telling you that.
I'm humbled by that.
I'm just telling you, your credentials are that good, and to lose these credentials when you could really be moving the city forward, I am devastated. I am angry and I am devastated. So, if you would be open, and I'm only one person, but if council seems to have a consensus that you would be open to discussions of us making a reasonable counteroffer, would you be open to that or...
I would. I read a book a long time ago, and it said that successful people do not look for money. They look for opportunities, and if there's opportunities, I always look at them.
Always. But I think that's a good point, but at the same time, this city needs to treat, especially somebody like you, and pay you for what you are worth. That is what we need to start doing. So, that's my discussion. If council is in favor of that, I would like to have Steve Kennedy, though, in those discussions with Mike and bring back an offer, and we can get an email, have a special meeting, and get this issue off the table. Shouldn't be that difficult.
If I could, Mr. Mayor.
Superintendent Bovin, please, go ahead.
This wasn't an easy decision for myself as well, just to let you all know. I mean, it's...I grew up in a small town, grew up on a farm, and just hanging out with some of the local businesses in the morning, hanging out with the old timers, a little guy named Bruce and Doug that I hang out with in the morning. It's just, they calculate each other. It reminds me of being on the farm, it just does, and it's just, this town has, you're right, it has a lot of potential, a lot of potential, and that's kind of my dream, was to come to a small town after I got the big-city experience, to come back and give it back to the people. That's just the kind of person I am, so. Again, it was a tough decision. It was a decision that, you know, we made as a family. My wife cried over it, she couldn't believe that she did that to me and took a job and a... My wife cried over it, she couldn't believe that she did that to me and took a job in a northern town instead of down here with the circumstances. But we have also talked about what happens if this happens right here. And I said I would listen to him, and she's agreed to not buy a house yet and wait to see what we find out, so, yeah, I'm willing to do that.
Well, you know, the art of the deal never ends. I mean, that's what I do in business, I work and buy and sell businesses, I negotiate. You know, the art of the deal is never over with. And I'm shocked that nobody discussed this with you on Friday, but I think that this has a tremendous reward for the city. I will tell you, I have spoken to taxpayers in the city and said, whatever, we need somebody with his credentials, I think people in the city understand that someone of your credentials is gonna cost some money. The feeling I'm getting from taxpayers is that you are worth it, you're a young individual, you could be here 20 years working with us, potentially. I just think we need someone with your credentials, we really do.
I got something to say.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
I'm in favor of Councilmember Kurzweil's ideas and perspective on the matter, but I, in regards to this, I want to ask Tim a question over there. I've read the charter, okay, the South Lyon Charter, and I don't remember anything in it that says, "City council can cross over the line to act as administration in a hiring procedure for employees." Are we legally in the good side, good water, or whatever, if we start doing this? Your opinion, I've read the charter, I never saw it in there, but where we are right now.
So.
I got the answer.
With a request, I mean, I would normally take that as a request for a legal opinion and say I would need to go write it out and look at it. To give you some, to be able to answer your question, I think this, you have to take into consideration, you're working with an interim city manager, there's a budget component to the issue that's at hand, and I think that if you get into the technical of who has the authority to make the hire, I think this is a request to help the interim city manager address a potential resignation of a director and figure out a way if that person will stay on. I don't think it crosses over into the policymakers or legislators getting into the administrative role, given all of those circumstances.
Mr. Mayor? Chief Collins, please.
Just a brief comment, if I could.
Yes.
I certainly would appreciate the help. My understanding of hiring authority of the city manager is to negotiate and hire within budget. So that's what happened at the time Mike was hired. If council is willing to go well above those numbers, I think it's an excellent idea that council should participate in that process and assist either a manager or an interim manager in setting a number that's likely to be acceptable to council.
Understood. Does anyone else have anything on the discussion? Because I'll entertain a motion that we would allow Chief Collins to pursue a counteroffer to Superintendent Bovin.
Yes, I have a discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
So, a couple things I wanted to address. First of all, I think you are doing an excellent job, Department Head Bovin, you are, you're doing a fantastic job, and we are so lucky to have you. However, I would never think to hold you back, so if you received another offer and it's greater than ours, I wish you all the luck in the world, and you'll do wonderful things wherever you go, and congratulations to your wife as well. I mean, that's amazing, and I'm very happy for the both of you. However, I don't think I'm in favor of a counteroffer, simply because there are other employees in the city of South Lyon, specifically our administrative staff, who are severely underpaid. And we have a budget issue as it currently is, I would like to see them and their situation addressed. And it's not that I don't want you here, because I think, I mean, like I said, you are an asset, and I would love to have you stay, but we can't offer you private sector prices. Private sector, we just can't compete with because we're public sector. They're two totally different entities, and that's true across the board for any city. A public sector price is not ever gonna be able to compete with a private sector price, they're just night and day. But we also don't ask the same thing of private sector individuals. So the way we treat our employees, we may not be able to offer them as much money, but we give them great benefits. Or they don't have to work as many hours, we give them more vacation time, or things of that nature, they work a nine-to-five instead of 80-hour work weeks. So, public sector and private sector, two different things, and I don't know if we can counteroffer you, I don't know what the counteroffer would be, but I don't think I would be in favor of it, just simply because there are other individuals who need to be addressed. But I wish you all the luck in the world, and thank you for everything you've done.
Councilmember Kurzweil?
No, no, go on, go on.
Councilmember Kivell, go ahead.
If some of the data that had been suggested in the resignation first email is accurate, I have no interest in trying to entertain a competitive number for what you're being offered by the other firm. I've enjoyed the daylights out of your being here, and your capabilities are clearly exactly what we need. I just think that if it was a bidding war, this would have never taken place, because we're just not going to be able to compete with that kind of outside financial influence. So that's just my two cents.
I will say one thing, and she said it earlier, is you have to remember that you used to have two superintendents doing this position, and Bob kind of morphed into that. And if you don't get the qualifications like myself with the A license and water license and the DPW experience, you're gonna end up with two individuals paying them more than you're paying me right now.
I know, and that's actually a lion's share of where the problem lies, is it's been wonderful having you being here, but we had you at a much more affordable rate before, and he was railed out of the city by the behavior of this council, so.
That's not true.
That is very true.
That is absolutely true.
We're gonna stay on target here, we've had a long agenda. Glenn, did you want to finish your comment?
Well, just simply that, is that it's just my personal opinion that the idea that we've got a city manager coming onboard too. So obviously, the idea that a superintendent for DPW or wastewater water being paid higher than what the guy that is his boss is gonna be a very difficult pill to swallow. So I think we're creating an unrealistic environment financially there, so.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
I think this is why the city struggles. I think this is why the city struggles, is the prior individual did not have your credentials, wasn't gonna get your credentials, and that is the sad part about it, is that someone with your credentials may not be here, because these types of credentials aren't gonna come back. And it's clear that someone with your credentials is making the difference over there in DPW and the Water Department. Other individuals have had their opportunities, and they have failed at them, quite frankly, and haven't quite done the job. But they've been around and, you know, and did favors for people, so whatever, whatever. But this is, we're talking about professionalism now in moving a department into the 21st century. And nobody says we have to match the offer. There are times where wages that are paid in the private sector are not competitive with those that are paid in the government sector. Some government jobs pay extremely well, and sometimes the private sector can't match that. So it all depends on the job and exactly what the credentials are and the demand. I doubt whether we will find someone with your credentials in the future. I think you're one of those, you have to be sharp enough to know that this is talent that only comes around once in a while. And I think that if you're willing to take a little less than the 40, but yet we come up to a reasonable offer, I think this is an enterprise, the money would be in the enterprise funds to compensate, because that's where part of your salary comes out of. So it wouldn't have a tough budget fiscal impact by any means. But you're a stabilizing factor, and I think that in and of itself is worth the consideration. You've just been wonderful, just, it'd be a shame if you go, and I think there'll be a lot of people that'll sit back and say, "Figures, South Lyon blew it again."
Just a little follow-up, is there's no doubt that you're a huge asset for us. To be able to have you for the price that we had already negotiated was absolutely a dream come true. It solved a lot of our, like, everyone could take a sigh of relief that we know that that is handled, and we were delighted by that. But, and this is meant to actually be a compliment, I mean, you have enormous credentials. The problem is, your Cadillac or Mercedes or whatever credentials far exceed what we really have to have. We need to end up being able to fulfill our state legal obligations by being compliant to what we have to file. Everything above that is really a huge benefit, but all those huge benefits have a tendency to tick up the cost, and we just simply can't afford to end up paying for the Mercedes when we can get by with a Chevy. If there were some middle ground there, man, I'd be all in favor of taking a look at it. If you guys talk and you can come to some kind of a consensus, the number will mean the whole deal, so.
Councilmember Walton, go ahead.
I don't think it hurts to have the conversation and see where we're at with the numbers.
I didn't hear anything you said.
Could you speak up just a little?
I said I don't think it hurts to have the conversation and find out.
No, I'm completely comfortable with that, yeah.
I'm in favor of it.
Well, I guess I'll make a motion that we sit down with Mr. Bovin and discuss maybe a counteroffer.
Again, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Again, no matter what happens, I appreciate everything that everybody's done for me here, regardless of this, and there'd be no hard feelings either way. You know, another part of life is, the way I grew up was, it doesn't matter what you take with you, it's what you leave behind, and that's what I hope I've done here, is put that hope, put that positive attitude in everybody to, you know, continue on and to move forward with the path that, you know, we've kind of steered everybody on, so. Besides that, again, I'm humbled by what everybody has said here tonight. I just consider myself a, you know, just a simple man, so all the compliments are sometimes hard to handle sometimes, so I appreciate them.
All right.
Well, they're certainly warranted, so you should be very proud of what you've accomplished.
Definitely well deserved.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Walton, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
Motion passes. With that, we'll move forward to the budget.
I have nothing.
Chief Collins, did you have anything on budget tonight?
Not on budget.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we'll move forward to the manager's report.
Stay with me for one second here, I'll limit my comments, I think, to three different Number one, and most important, thanks to Pastor Rod Rhode and the volunteers from Oak Point Church for their hard work in making the spring cleanup on Saturday a success. Also, thanks to all the volunteers from our community, as well as DPW and other city staff members who also worked very hard to make it work and braved the rain, and at the very end, the lightning, which was the one thing that might have caused me to cancel. But given all the circumstances and the fact that DPW was already here, the food was already purchased, and the volunteers couldn't be rescheduled, we went ahead and did it, and the truth is, we probably got it done a little faster because we were all getting wet.
We were motivated.
So, thanks for that. A very nice gentleman, I believe it was the president of Maple Creek Homeowners Association, addressed councilmaking request for a 60-40 split for some needed repairs to a boardwalk traversing wetlands coming from Maple Creek going out toward Nine Mile. I worked with the zoning administrator and other city staff, and we pulled the master deeds, we pulled maps, we determined that that boardwalk is within the common area of the Maple Creek condominium association. According to the final site plan, and I'll read just a bit from that, "For the development and the master deed, the bridge is included in the common area definition, and maintenance, repair, and replacement of all common elements shall be the responsibility of the association," referring to the homeowners association. I then consulted with City Attorney Wilhelm to see if it was in any way proper for the city to spend city money on that project. City Attorney Wilhelm is, of course, here and can comment, but the essence of, his opinion was, the city is permitted to expend public funds only for a public purpose, expending public funds for a private purpose is illegal under Michigan law.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait, well, I missed that part, what did you say?
Expending public funds for a private purpose is illegal under Michigan law.
Oh, good to know.
So, given that information, I'm looking for some direction from council, whether you would like this to come back before you, or that you'd simply like me to convey to the homeowners association that the city cannot participate in their project.
Chief, you're doing great.
I think you can communicate with them.
I would appreciate you, please, reaching out to them, they have also contacted me, and I told them that, I didn't know you were gonna do that in the background, they wanted to know if they needed to be here on the agenda, and I told them we had a rather lengthy agenda and that we probably wouldn't be able to get to it. So I appreciate you getting to that, and I would also appreciate you reaching out to them and letting them know that.
I will do so, I already had a good conversation with the gentleman who spoke to council, I will recontact him and let him know.
Thank you.
And my other question is, and maybe this is partly answered by the fact that we passed the earlier version of the liquor license ordinance, the original question was, "Does council want Dr. Byfano's request for a Class C liquor license to be placed on the agenda for May 29th? And if so, what documentation do we need?" I think the newly approved second reading of that ordinance will give me most of those answers, but if council has any additional comment at this time, I would welcome that. Okay, we'll figure it out, and that's it for my report. Plus, there are questions.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
So I received some feedback from residents about the citywide garage sale?
Yes.
And that it was very wet, and it was also Mother's Day, and is there a possibility that we could reschedule?
I would say there's seven possibilities sitting right in front of me that we can reschedule, if four of you tell me to reschedule.
Because I feel like we need a redo, you know?
I had several people ask me if that was possible, too. I was gonna bring it up in council comments, but, no, that's perfectly fine, if we want to address that now. I feel like a lot of people probably did a lot of prep and work to get ready for that, and it was.
Oh, yeah.
A monsoon most of the weekend.
The only shortcoming that I'm imagining was, doesn't GFL prep for an enhanced pickup on the following Monday?
Well, they normally are at least aware that there's likely to be garage sale leftovers.
Yeah.
So if we're going to do it again, we can certainly provide them that notice. My only question would be, how far out do we want to schedule it?
Mr. Mayor?
Or does council have a preference?
I'm thinking it's spring cleanup kind of a thing, so it should probably be pretty soon.
Councilmember Parisian, go ahead.
I would say June, just because, I mean, it buys people enough time to be ready for it, because a lot of people didn't know it was actually happening, and they had Mother's Day that they were prepping for. So aside from the weather, that was just a busy weekend in general, and school will be out in June as well, so it allows parents that extra time to get everything they need to do together. So I would just, one voice... So, I would, just one voice speaking here, so feel free to pick any day you want, but a day in June, I think, might be best, but also, there are so many people that look forward to this event, and it's usually like a big shebang, so people go to the farmer's market, and then they go garage sailing and enjoy the downtown, so it's usually a really big deal.
Well, how about this, to be politically correct, I will work with the city attorney, I will avoid Father's Day weekend.
Okay, there you go.
And we will, we will pick a date.
Perfect.
In June.
Thank you.
Councilmember Curdwell, go ahead.
I just want to let you know that I am a huge garage sale shopper, and my phone rang all weekend, and people were very, very upset. In fact, I had people at my door wondering if I, where my garage sale stuff was, because they always come to my house, and it was pouring like cats and dogs. So, you're probably looking at the weekend of June 1st and 2nd, or 8th and 9th, because the following weekend is Father's Day, so.
What about the weekend after?
So, people really, really look forward to it. So, go early in June and get it over with, because then you start falling into 4th of July weekend, and schools out, and vacations start, so.
We'll schedule it for one of those two weekends, we'll see what works best, and we'll notify GFL.
Whatever council wants.
Councilmember Walton, please.
I'd like to make a quick comment, too. In regards to the garage sales, in the past, I believe that council approved it to be the third weekend of May, and then last year, it went back to the first weekend of May, and this year, it's the second weekend of May, so it's a little confusing to others out there that are having garage sales to follow when it is and when it isn't. I'd like to keep it consistent, and I believe the reason council voted to move it from the first weekend of May was because this weather frequently occurred.
That's, that's true. We'll be happy to do it, whatever weekend council would like us to do it.
So, I'm just throwing that out there, too, is that I think it needs to, whatever we decide, we need to kind of try to keep that consistent for future.
Wasn't this year because Oak Point was available at this particular weekend?
It was partly due to when Oak Point was available, and then there were some changes made in which weekend it was going to be, because in prior years, we'd had to deal with cold and rain, which we thought by making it later, we might avoid.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I mean, you can always throw it out to Bob Donahue to post it on the city's Facebook site, and ask to do like a poll, and set those three weekends out there, excluding Father's Day weekend, and see what the people would like to see.
That'd be great.
And then come back next meeting, and, or maybe two weeks from now, and decide on a date.
Yeah, I think by the next meeting, we have to come up with a date, so we have adequate leave time.
That's my bad.
For people to know.
Two weeks from now, yeah.
I'll be the day after holiday.
People want to clear their garages and stuff out, too. Shed some of the stuff they've been housing all winter long.
Thanks, Chief.
Great, thanks for looking into, and bringing that up.
Thank you, yeah, my sentiments exactly. I have something I'd like to ask.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Chief, on the council report from April 30th through May 6th, on the second page of council inquiries, it's on the first paragraph, "In the future, council members will be polled regarding placement of a tree," okay?
That's the Arbor Day, the tree that that refers to.
Are we going to be polled to see if we want to do it somewhere else, or what? I don't have any preferences, but I.
Yes, there was some concern expressed by council member that two years in a row, the Arbor Day, and this is only with respect to the Arbor Day ceremonial tree, the concern was that two years in a row, that tree was planted on the property of the same place. I think the interest was in maybe spreading the wealth around. The fact was, this time, the last two times, it was St. Joe's Church, and they were the only ones that had asked for the tree to be planted on their property.
They were the only ones.
They were the only ones who asked.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, they were the only ones that asked, so that's where it went. There would be no opposition, of course, that if council had a different preference, or somebody else made a request, that we would entertain any and all requests, and if there's more than one, council could make the decision.
Well, if I could weigh in on that, I'm the one that actually had brought that forward, and it was, it wasn't about St. Joe's, it wasn't about two years in a row, it was the idea that we're taking the city's tree, we have how many hundreds of acres of parkland, how many easement miles do we have in front of people's homes and things? That should end up being in a public place, not in, on a private property, like a church, or someone's backyard, or a company's front yard. That's a city, a city tree, and it should end up going on city property.
Yeah, I believe the first tree that was planted over there, Bob Martin, is the one that picked the location, so I recall that distinctly.
Doesn't matter, it still should be on a public, public place.
Is there any stipulations with the Arbor Day Foundation of how or who can apply, or how it's determined?
The only thing that I'm aware of is that we're obligated to spend a certain amount of money. I think Mike, might actually be more aware of some of the finer points of the requirements for the Tree City designation, and that's what it revolves around.
Okay, fine.
And remember, that's not the only tree that's planted in the city. In fact, we have a lot of locations where trees have come down, that we're replanning trees, you know, in those same spots, in the easement right-of-ways and stuff, so.
Well, that answers my question both ways.
Yeah, there's, anywhere from nine to 15, I think, is the number of typical trees that go in every year.
Councilmember Parisian?
So, I have no reservations with the tree being planted at St. Joe's. My only question is, for the sake of diversity, are we asking other places, are you interested in having the tree planted, or are we just waiting for them to come to us? Because if St. Joe's is the only individual or entity coming to us, saying, hey, I have interest in having the tree planted on the church's property, I don't really think that's giving anyone else notice, it's not giving anybody else the opportunity to put it in.
And until now, I've not been involved at all in the process.
Maybe in the future, we can.
It's always been a determination, as far as I know, on the part of the DPW director.
Okay.
And I'd have a lot of history to go with, so when the first person called me, I said yes, and I didn't even realize it went in the same place last year until Ron told me.
And it's, yeah, how would you know?
No, I didn't. And then also, a good idea maybe in the future is, is to do this early enough so that we can get either to you guys or the whole city as a whole, and put it on the website, you know, and see if anybody has any, you know, if they want to put in a request to have it in their yard, and then we can vote on it, so.
Absolutely.
Good idea.
I got another question for the chief.
Councilman Richards, go ahead.
Chief Collins, I'd like to ask this question to Chief Vogel up in the corner up there. It said in a fire department on the May 07th through May 13th report, "We are interviewing a candidate for fire inspector next Tuesday." Did that, now, would, what?
He said it was, that's for tomorrow.
Okay. Is this a candidate, I'm very interested in this, is this a candidate from outside of the South Lyon Police Department, which I think it should be? Are we interviewing candidates from other towns?
Chief Vogel, could you come up to the microphone so the public can hear us?
Thanks, Chief.
Yes.
Mr. Vogel.
Short and sweet.
Okay, I want to make it short, like, Jen, it's a short and sweet, okay? Interviewing a candidate for fire inspector next Tuesday, okay? I would think it would be very dangerous for us to have a fire inspector within our own police department for the size of community we are. Most of the communities have an outside fire inspector, ours used to come from Farmington, as I recall, and then another one came from.
Excuse my question, so, there's never been a fire inspector inside the police department? The previous South Lyon fire inspector was from Brighton, he was working part-time.
Oh, yeah.
He was promoted to fire marshal, prohibited him from being the city of South Lyon's inspector. I have been searching since I got here to fill the position, which is also part-time like myself, and I've been unsuccessful, but I got a good feeling about tomorrow's candidate.
Okay, so, then we're getting a candidate that's experienced in fire inspection and fire marshal classification.
Correct.
Okay, because I just thought there's a big legality thing here, okay? And questionable subjective interests between.
So you're uncomfortable hiring somebody outside the city?
No.
Oh, okay.
Uncomfortable hiring somebody for inspector and fire marshal inside the city?
No, no, because no affiliation to South Lyon.
Okay, great, wonderful, that answers my question. Thank you very much. Sorry to bother you.
No, no problem.
If no one has anything else for Chief Collins and his manager report, we'll move on to council comments. Fantastic. Councilmember Kivell, why don't you start us off tonight?
Well, much as Chief Collins had mentioned, I wanted to thank everybody that had participated in the spring cleanup. The rain actually, once it had rained right through the coat, it got a lot less comfortable, so, but they really, I mean, those guys were hustling, it was really cool to see they, I was working on the entrance signs, and they had a system, they'd make a trench, start filling the line, it's like a big smile in the front of the flower beds, start tossing mulch, and move on to the next one, and so it worked out pretty nicely, and the food was very good, and I have to commend both Rodden and Phil for standing underneath that little tent facility, cooking all the burgers and dogs, that was really nice. I'd like to ask Chief Vogel, actually, it might end up being Mr. Bovin, too, the little house in the park, we had talked about having the training session over there, I was wondering if there's been any progress in determining those asbestos shingles.
Yes, so I have contacted three bids to find out about the asbestos.
Okay.
Ms. Deaton has, in the process of trying to get a DTE and consumers demo disconnect, which I found out is different, when we get that done, then we would do a permit for demo, on SafeBilt.
So that house is still hot right now?
I'm sorry?
It's still hot right now?
There's no gas, but there's also sewer lines and water lines that have to be disconnected, and the power. Honestly, my budget couldn't take paying for the asbestos this year, so I have set a goal with assistance of Chief Kennedy from Ann Arbor, to probably burn it in the fall. It'll be cooler, it's too hot in August.
That makes sense.
We were going to do a training morning, and then probably start really early, and then have it burned down by noon, that way it doesn't affect the park, is what the ultimate goal is.
Well, that's good, I hope that worked.
The issue we have now is there's a garage that I didn't realize until I walked through, it's a nice house, it'd be great training, and I think it'll, you know, make it nice back there.
Now, the garage is just wood-sited, though, correct?
Correct, so is the house. I think they're the same siding. I would have to get ahold of, I'm not sure whose generator's in the garage, but that'll have to be removed, and then, like I said, the DTE and consumer has to be done, and then a permit.
Right, well, good, okay, I'm happy to hear.
Good news is, I don't think there's asbestos in there, from some of the early walk-throughs, they think it's old enough that it probably doesn't have it.
Terrific.
Councilmember Parisian?
A lot more cost-effective.
I'm going to hijack your council comment. I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So, is that house secure? So, it's not going to be a public safety?
It's a solid house.
Okay.
It's old.
From a public safety standpoint, if there's asbestos in the house, I just didn't want anybody exposed to that.
No, I mean, you'd have to, like, eat the tile.
Okay, cool.
I think it's a safe house, it's rundown, it's old.
Okay, great.
But it's secure.
Thanks.
Beautiful, thank you. That's all I had.
Councilmember Curdwell?
Yeah, I just have one comment, it's, I attended the Cultural Arts Commission, they had a very, very successful gallery opening, there were close to 300 people there that throughout the, I believe the two-hour period, it was packed. It was great seeing all the parents that were there with the kids, the wonderful artwork that these young, young artists are doing, a lot of pictures were taken. So I would like to thank everyone on the Cultural Arts Commission for their hard work, but more importantly, like to thank all the students at South Lyon and South Lyon East who took the time to put together some artwork and bring it over here to the gallery. You're great students, and you have great careers, and I'm just so glad that you're here in the city of South Lyon, thanks.
Councilmember Parisian?
Okay, I have three things to mention. So, Heather Bruegel is spearheading an MS fundraiser, so multiple sclerosis, she is heading a fundraiser that's going to be Saturday, May 19th, so this coming Saturday, at the Big B Coffee in South Lyon, and it's going to be a bake sale, where all of the proceeds go to the National MS Foundation to try to find a cure for MS. This is a particular disease that is near and dear to my heart, so I made the promise that I would be certain to announce, and also bake some goods for the sale. So if you have time and you're in the area, please be sure to swing by and buy some baked goods. Also, the Cultural Arts Commission had the art show, and it was phenomenal, and I also think that every year, it just keeps getting better and better. There's more people, and it's, the word is spreading about how wonderful the committee is, what a wonderful job the committee is doing, and the talent in South Lyon is vast, so we're very lucky, we have some incredibly talented kids. So I think there's still time to vote for your favorite piece, and then also, the last thing I wanted to say was, thank you again to the individuals who stepped forward and agreed to volunteer their time and be on a board or a committee or a commission, because it's something that we desperately need, we need volunteers to keep our city going, and we still need volunteers. We have a few different vacancies going on, I think it's DDA, the Planning Commission, the Board of Ethics still has seats available, Parks and Recreation, so if you have the time or you know some individuals that may be interested, spread the word, we need them. Thank you, and have a good night.
Councilmember Walton?
I, again, I was going to express the thank you to the city cleanup, everyone that came out, it does look great, it always, always does. The cultural arts, I stopped in early tonight to take a peek around, because unfortunately I had something that came up and couldn't come to the grand opening. Excellent, although students are wonderful. And I also wanted to take a quick moment to thank Ryan Layer, Citizen Number One, for collecting letters and just well wishes for our mailman, I believe his name is Mailman Dave. And so I dropped off my letter to you today, and I appreciate that you're collecting those and taking care of our guy there, so. Other than that, everyone have a good night.
Councilmember Kennedy?
For council comment tonight, I'd just like to share a note that was issued by Donna Olson, the director of the Salem-South Lyon District Library. She issued the note a couple of weeks ago, where she recognized the efforts of some of the library volunteers. In her note, she stated that Greg Jacks, Luke Irvin, and Andrew Hughes spent most of the previous day dismantling rows of shelving at Madonna University, loading it up, trucking it back to the library, and then unloading it. A big thanks for their time and muscle, saving the library over $13,000 for shelving. Thanks also went out to Kathy Marucci, Sarah Swidersky, and Kathy Hutchinson for helping unload that truck once it arrived. I think this is just a great example of volunteers in the area lending a hand to save our libraries some money, and continue to improve it for our residents and everyone else who uses it. On a separate note, I'd like to draw attention to the fact that we are in the process of soliciting input for the selection of the new city manager. On the website, there's a survey that we've asked residents to complete, provide some input on what they'd like to see in the next city manager, and I'd encourage the residents to do that. The deadline for providing that is Friday, May 18th, and it will be taken into the, into consideration for the selection process. So appreciate your participation in that, and that's all I have for this evening.
Councilmember Richards?
Yeah, I've got a lot of little things go through fast. Yeah, I showed up for my interview with our new people and that are searching for a city manager, and I was very happy to do so, and he thanked me for my comments and insights on what to watch out for in our selection process, and I urged him to also include asking our former city manager, Rod Cook, to review how this process is being conducted as just an advisor, and to help us out without participating in it directly, and he thought that was a good idea. Okay, next topic, Normar came to our rescue, for those of you who don't know who that is, that Normar is a tree service, and they cut down several trees on Liberty Street here, right in front of us, which were much in need, just my point that we could get the same services, a little bit less money, in a different way. But Normar does excellent service, and we can't afford. service, and we can't afford equipment like they've got, and they did it with a two-man crew, which, trees like that always had a four- and five-man crew that I ever worked with, and, but those guys, they were senior citizens themselves, and they did the job very smooth and efficiently. I was amazed. Also, I'd like to let everybody, I contacted Oakland County Drain Commission, now known as Water Resources Commission. I do, once every, twice a year, I contact them, and I told them about our successes with our drain cleanup with the Boy Scouts and the Tube Mill, and I told them where we didn't have such good success, because we didn't have the personnel to finish off, like, the north end of town. We didn't touch that at all this year. But anyway, I call them, I call them up and talk to certain people twice a year, and I did that, and they thanked me for it very much. With that, that's enough for me. Thank you.
All right, try and make this quick. Tim, I had a quick one for you, just, I was curious on Matt, who filled in for you during our council conduct, council conduct meeting. I was just wondering where he was at on that paperwork. I don't need an answer now, I was just putting it in your mind.
Well, he and I talked last week, as the packet day came up on Thursday, he is working on it, did not have anything in a form to present for tonight, but it should be on the next council meeting.
Okay, great. Other thing, we will not meet again until after Memorial Day, and it was brought to my attention that one of our local residents, Dana Johnston, who I've known most of my life, since she was a medical, you know, a med at our Panther practices back when we were children, she has run the Memorial Day Parade, or a part of it, for, this is her 40th year, and that's just hard to even wrap my head around. That's very cool, so I'm looking forward to seeing everyone out at the Memorial Day Parade, and if you see Dana Johnston, please let her know how much you appreciate her hard work in helping us be able to do that annually. The concerts in the park schedule is finalized, we all got a copy of that today. I'm sure that'll be on the website, so definitely check that out. I certainly want to thank our volunteers on Saturday. I popped in late, just to let them know how much I appreciated it, but I've definitely seen local and professional sporting events canceled for far less, so way to go get them, guys. And I do want to apologize, I missed the cultural arts thing, I did have a scheduling conflict. The art outside here in the Commons area looks incredible. I do not have an artistic bone in my body, but we definitely have some people with some talent here, so great job by everyone associated with that, and with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'm adjourned. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.